Hi Jefferson, the meeting's gonna start in a few minutes if you can hang on.
Okay, should I call back?
Nope, stay on the line.
Copy that.
Good evening everybody and welcome to our Monday, September 25th, ready, regular city council meeting. May I please have a roll call? And just for the record, tonight, because we have one council member calling in, all of the votes will be done by a roll call.
Councilmember Lamont?
Here.
Councilmember Rosenthal?
Here.
Councilmember Wagner?
Here.
Mayor Protem Mullin?
Here.
Mayor Peak?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Norm would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance? Kristi, may I please have a report on the closed session?
Thank you Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, good evening. Tonight's regular meeting convened at 5:30 sharp, at which time we recessed to a closed session pursuant to government code section 54956.8. Councilmember Wagner joined us by telephone in the closed session, which ended at 6:12, and the council discussed all of the items that were on the posted agenda but took no reportable action. And that concludes my report.
Thank you Kristi. We are, may I have an approval of the agenda, or I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda of pulling items 3B, 5, 8, and 9, and is there any other public comment or anything else? Heather, or Chelsea?
Just on 5.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Oh.
All in favor? Oh, let's do a roll call.
Bye.
We gotta, we gotta do a roll call, I apologize.
Mayor Peak?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Mullin?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamont?
Yes.
Councilmember Rosenthal?
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Alright, thank you. We're gonna begin this evening with a couple ceremonial presentations. We're gonna start with the LA County Sheriff's Department, followed by a proclamation for water with David Rydman, followed by a presentation by, regards to CCAs. So a couple members from our Sheriff's Department Beach Team will be joining me tonight, and I'd just like to invite the members that are here to come up and accept their commendations, and I have, I just want to acknowledge all of them first. Started, first with Sergeant Jim Braden, who's not here tonight, but I know has been serving our area for a very long time, we're very lucky to have him. Lieutenant Jim Royal, is one of the most dedicated officers that works here locally in our community, and also on the beach team during the summer, as well as Deputy Steve Aranis, Deputy Nethalie Aquino, Deputy Landon Sanchez, Deputy Joe Tolles, Deputy Doug Johnson, Deputy Santiago Cienfuegos, Deputy Angelica Curial, Deputy Sam Hollinger, Deputy Mitch Bowen, and Deputy Mike Trinan. So, thank you guys all for being here tonight, and I'm gonna let you disseminate these afterwards, and we're gonna take one of them and do a photo real quick. Councilmember Rosenthal, can you speed over ten minutes? Perfect. I'm gonna invite a couple of the deputies up for a comment real quick.
Just on behalf of the beach team, and Lieutenant Royal, and Sergeant Braden, and everybody up here, and a couple that aren't here, was, we made it through another summer. So, yeah, it was, we had a good summer, and we had a, we had a good beach team, and everything went pretty smooth, and it helped with some of the things we did with the signs and all that, and we got through another one. That's basically, anyone else?
Thank you very much. Yeah, I don't know if anyone realizes this, but we have a specific team that works our beaches in the summer that are based out of Zuma Beach, and work at Zuma, and some of the other pocket beaches like Surf Rider, in the Point Dume area, as well as Nicholas, and some of the other county properties, and always ready, willing, and able to help and keep our public safe. So I think it's something that's extremely important for our community, to have those additional resources in the summer when our population of visitors really swells. So, thank you all very much. Is Dave here? There he is. So we have a proclamation declaring October 12th, 2017 as Imagine a Day Without Water. And boy, do I not know what I would do without water. So we do have a proclamation here, which I'm gonna read and present to Dave. Whereas the infrastructure that brings water to and from our homes, businesses, is essential to the quality of life and economic vitality of the city of Malibu. Whereas the 13,000 residents on average utilize 224 gallons per person, per day, from the LA County Water System, with approximately 200 miles of pipeline and 50 storage tanks. Whereas utilities nationwide are grappling with aging infrastructure, and a lack of reliable revenue and funding to maintain systems. Whereas innovation in water conservation and water reuse will drive growth, economic development, and establish the 21st century paradigm of water management in the United States. Whereas LA County Water Works District 29 strives to provide a supply of high-quality water to the communities it serves, is a partner on the Malibu Area Conservation Coalition, and assists in the city's efforts to implement water-saving programs. Whereas the city of Malibu will participate in Imagine a Day Without Water on October 12th, to show its dedication to reliable water infrastructure. Now therefore be it resolved, the Malibu City Council does hereby proclaim October 12th, 2017 as Imagine a Day Without Water, and encourages citizens to recognize the critical importance of access to clean water and the infrastructure necessary to protect this valuable resource. Dave? Thank you. I don't know if you have any comments for us? We'll do a quick photo real quick.
I just wanna express both the Department of Public Work and the Water Works District's appreciation for the city of Malibu of partnering with us on all things water. Just to highlight a couple things for tonight. Many of you may be aware of the department's efforts on its water resiliency plan. This was an effort that was initiated by the Board of Supervisors in April of 2016, and Public Works is well on its way to developing this plan. Today, LA County captures about 1.5, or enough water for about 1.5 million residents per year, but there are studies that show that there's a potential for projects that would capture enough to double that amount, or enough to meet the needs of a third of the county's population. The challenge in LA County is that we have these incredible shifts in weather patterns, as we've seen over the last six years. Five years of record drought, followed by five year, or one year of record rainfall. So our challenge is finding ways to capture that local supply, and store it so that the region can be more resilient to drought when it does occur in the area. Capturing those local water resources also will protect the quality of our beaches, our oceans, our lakes, and our rivers. So there's really a dual purpose, and it's a multipurpose effort that the county is going after. So the board has directed, they directed in May of 2017, or 2017, for Public Works to initiate the Water for LA, or H2O for LA, you can hashtag that and follow it on Twitter if you want, to engage stakeholders in this effort to develop the water resiliency plan. So if you're interested, visit our website, dpw.lacounty.gov, or you can again follow us on Twitter using the hashtag H2O for LA. Just numbers for the Water District too, while we haven't been record-setting in our conservation, we are staying above 10%, a 10% decrease through the entire summer. There were a couple months that were up around 15%, a couple that were down around 11% compared to what we did in 2013. So residents of Malibu continue to conserve, I want to recognize the efforts. So thank you for tonight, appreciate. If you have any questions too, I'll take them, I'm good.
Questions, anyone? Dave, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We're now, I'd like to invite up Barbara Boswell from the California Choice Energy Authority. Is she here? There she is. And this is a presentation on community choice aggregation, which has to do with our electricity. And we'll be discussing that later this evening.
It does, and I'm hoping our PowerPoint is here? Miracle, okay. And, I don't know how to advance it. Okay, well, thank you Mayor, and Mayor Protem, and members of the city council. It's our pleasure to be here to provide you information with regards to community choice aggregation. I know that, I mean, it's a topic that's at the top of many cities' lists currently in LA County, and you're being asked to evaluate options, and we're here to present information on one option. I'm joined by Jason Cottle, he is the Deputy Executive Director of California Choice Energy Authority, and also the Deputy City Manager for the City of Lancaster. I am a consultant for California Choice Energy Authority, but before that, I went into that field, I was formerly the Finance Director for the City of Lancaster when Lancaster went through the process of evaluating and implementing their community, their community choice aggregation program. And I know that you've had a couple of presentations, so I'll move quickly through, through mine. Not sure where it went.
Give it one second, they're putting it up.
So I can, I can probably begin without the slides. Community choice aggregation is a program whereby communities establish a program that aggregates the electricity usage within their community, and then they provide that energy through the grids to the end users. The community choice aggregation does not own the lines, those are continued to be owned by Southern California Edison. The CCA does not become responsible for maintenance of the lines, they don't have to start taking calls for, if your power is out, those remain the responsibility of Southern California Edison. The community choice aggregation program simply replaces the, the source of the energy that comes through the grid to the end users. The legislative authorization came in 2002, during the energy crisis, and it wasn't until 2010 that the first CCA program was implemented and began operation, and that was in Northern California, with Marin Clean Energy, and they were the first. They have been operating successfully since 2010, and since that time, there have been, I think actually now we're on our ninth operating CCA in California. Many of those in Northern California. Lancaster was the first to begin operation in Southern California, in the Southern California Edison region, and since then have been joined by Apple Valley Choice Energy, and there are a couple of, there is a city in San Diego, Solana Beach, that is moving forward, and looks to be the first in that territory to begin operation. Some of the benefits of, you know, why you would consider going into CCA, is, one is it provides the consumers with choice. There we go. I will move. This map depicts visually the activity in California, nearly all communities that have the, the opportunity of reevaluating community choice aggregation in one form or another. It's not moving. Oh, there we go. So why would you consider implementing a community choice aggregation program? One is that it, it provides the customers with choice, not only choice of provider. CCA is in a, an automatic enrollment program, which means when the CCA forms, the customers who are eligible within the community automatically become the CCA's customers unless the customer chooses to opt out. But the customer can choose to stay with the utility with Southern California Edison, should they choose. Most CCAs offer more than one energy product. They offer not only a default product, which typically is a higher renewable energy content than the utility offers, but also an opt-up product of 100% renewable energy is being offered. This has resulted in an increase in renewable energy usage or demand in California. It, it brings local control into the picture. Rate setting is done at the local level, as opposed to being held in San Francisco at the PUC. It provides economic development opportunities. Lancaster, for example, has an economic development incentive program to incentivize, or provide, an opportunity for businesses who may decide to locate in Lancaster, an incentive credit for the number of jobs that are being brought to the community. It's a new revenue stream for the cities, and the net revenues generated by the CCA can be used for energy efficiency programs, for example, or to provide a revenue stream for the community to reach its goals in terms of either increased renewable energy or greenhouse gas reduction. And lastly, the revenue that currently goes to the utility, then stays local for the community. And with any program that has benefits, there are also risks involved in, in a CCA. One is related to customer participation. Because customers can choose to opt out, you don't have 100% certainty in terms of how many customers you may be serving, which then puts a question in terms of how much energy do you need to procure in order to provide energy. Typically, in Southern California, we've been seeing an actual, very good rate of participation. Lancaster is currently serving 93% of its eligible customers, and that has held steady since they launched in 2015. So there isn't, they haven't seen fluctuation over time in terms of customers leaving, or customers coming back who originally chose. It's, it's a fairly flat or steady participation rate. The cost of energy is a risk, because you are purchasing energy on the open market, and it's a commodity that is subject to market conditions. You can mitigate that risk by entering into long-term contracts for flat rates, or for rates that are, you can project what you're gonna be paying over the long term. There are new regulatory compliance issues with, related to CCAs. However, cities work in a regulatory environment in everything that they do, and so while it's new, it's not a new concept in terms of having to comply with new regulatory requirements. There is some, there can be financial exposure to a community that implements a CCA program. If you don't put your agreements together properly, the city could be financially exposed to the contracts for energy procurement. However, there have been successfully negotiated contracts that protects cities' general funds and cities' general assets, and so the risk in terms of financial exposure there is mitigated or minimized. It is a, a, a area where there is competition. You are competing with Southern California Edison in terms of customers, and you want to compete with their rate, you don't want to be higher than Southern California Edison, because customers, if, if you're more expensive, they may choose to go back to the utility. So it's one of the only areas in which a city is actively competing with, with another business. And there are, there is an issue that's currently being, I guess, debated, not debated, but reviewed at the commission level, which is the power charge and difference adjustment, PCIA, or also known as exit fee. When customers leave the utility to join a CCA, they leave behind contracts with the utility for power that the utility had purchased on their behalf. And so those costs, in order to ensure the remaining customers aren't negatively impacted, those costs are passed on to the CCA customers in the form of an exit fee. Right now, the, the issue is that both parties say that the way that those costs are allocated or calculated is flawed, and there's agreement in terms of it not being calculated fairly, there's not agreement in terms of how it should be calculated, and that's the issue that's being evaluated at the commission level at this point. So if you should decide to pursue CCA implementation, what does the process look like? The first step is to have a technical study and financial pro forma developed. And that first step really will look at your energy usage. The usage is obtained from the utility, from Southern California Edison. We require, we request 12 months' usage, and then take that usage in current market to the conditions, and prepare a financial pro forma that will then determine, can the community create its own CCA program that is viable not only today, but out into the future using current market conditions. The study, I, I am aware that you're looking at potentially other JPA opportunities. The study would tell you, you know, what are you giving up in terms of a revenue stream, should you choose to join one of the other JPAs? Because it does look at just Malibu on its own merit, in terms of what it would look like financially for a CCA. Once that's done, and it's determined that you're financially viable, and the, and the city decides to move forward in the next step, the next step is actually developing your implementation plan, which is a document that's required to be filed with the PUC, that informs the PUC. We plan to implement a CCA program, and then these are the, what we plan to do with it, and the PUC certifies it and ensures that there are the required elements. And that is the only formal process with the PUC that's required for a CCA. And then you launch into implementation activities. The full cycle from feasibility to operations is about 12 to 18 months. And with that, I will turn it over to Jason to talk more specifically about the differences in government structures.
Thank you Barbara. Good evening. As Barbara said, I'm Jason Cottle, I'm the Deputy Executive Director for the CCEA, as well as a Deputy City Manager for the City of Lancaster. We have, as you can see from the JP, or from the structures of operation, so far in Southern California territory, and in Northern California territory, there's been three ways in which you form a CCA. First has been the traditional JPA model, which is the most prolific of the opportunities, and I think you've actually heard a couple of those presentations. The enterprise model, which is just the city standalone, which Lancaster was originally, until we created the hybrid JPA model, and those are Solana Beach, Apple Valley, and Clean Power SF, which are operating under the enterprise model. And that's very similar to the models in which cities traditionally operate their water services, sewer services, those, of those nature. The city completely accepts all the risk associated with that, and all the operation of those entities. Very similar structure, and it operates as an enterprise fund of your city. The third model is, is a creation of Lancaster Choice Energy, which was the identification that not all cities are homogeneous, right? Every city has a different priority, every city has a different structure, they have a different council authority, some councils want to take ownership, others may not want to take ownership. Well, the hybrid JPA model that we created allows you to do that. And basically, the difference between the models is you have a JPA model, which is a traditional JPA, where historically, and I think LA County gave a presentation, and you can ask them for questions that relates to their model specifically, but historically you have one seat on the board, one vote, and you have a one-size-fits-all for the entire communities that are members of that. The enterprise model, you have absolute control, you have absolute rate-setting authority, but you have the entire amount of risk. The JPA model we created is a JPA of CCAs, okay? The JPA model is a CCA that is a JPA, and the hybrid model is a JPA of CCA. So your city maintains autonomy with your CCA and your operation. The couple of, couple of defining, I guess, criteria there, in the difference of traditionally what is, what is operated, is in these control functions, in these major operational aspects of your CCA, there are certain decision-making authorities that you have as a city council. In a JPA model, the way that historically has happened, you have one vote in that conversation, depending on how many people sit on that JPA. I'm sure you have a transit JPA, I'm sure you have a, maybe you're part of the Air Quality Management District, whatever that is, it's very, very typical of that setting. In an enterprise model, you have full control of a rate setting, you have full control of a revenue, you have decisions about your, your type of energy you want to purchase, you have full operating risk, you have program control, an absolute program control, you have all the costs associated with the administrative, and you have the long-term liability with that entity. If you look at the third model, the hybrid JPA model, you still continue to have full control of a rate setting. That, that, that happens at the city council level in Malibu. You have full control over the revenue, as it relates to how you expend those revenues within the enterprise, and you have RPS decision of what type of energy you want to procure. The operating risk is shared. In this case, as a JPA of CCAs, there's a shared risk as it relates to the operating activities. Your council's not, your council's responsible through contract to manage the operation, but the management happens through the CCEA, and jointly between the other member cities of that JPA. So it's shared, not only the risks, there's costs are shared as well of that operation. You, as a city council, have full program control, so if your priority is electrification of your transportation system, or it's a greenhouse gas mitigation, or there's some other, some other program, energy program you want to do, that's, your city council controls and manages those program functions with the revenues that come from this, this operation. And the long-term personnel liability, you have none. You have the, you set the standard as it relates to what personnel you want to apply to this program, and how much, and how many of those personnel are. to this program, and how much, and how many of those personnel are. All the other operations will be managed through contract under the CCEA model. Historically, depending upon what your priorities are, and this, these priorities change with specific cities, but every one of the CCAs that's operational has a greater renewable content than do the incumbent IOUs. And this is just a handful of the operating ones, but MCE is 52%, Lancaster's 35%, Sonoma's 36%, and recently Pico launched, Pico Rivera launched through the CCEA model with 50% of the renewable energy as their base product. And they're the most recent operational CCA. The rate structure is typically lower as well for the operating CCAs. Lancaster's residents see about a 2% on average savings on the energy component of their bill. Apple Valley Choice Energy sees, I'm not too specific about theirs, but there is lower than the incumbent utility. And in Northern California, you can see Marin, and it actually is a little bit higher. I think that has changed since the creation of this form. And Sonoma Clean Power is lower than the incumbent utility. When we look at the California Choice Energy Authority specifically, there are certain benefits associated with joining this type of CCA or this form of CCA. It is a CCA formed by cities for cities, right? Every member of this entity is a city. We currently have City of Lancaster as a member, we have Pico Rivera as an operating member, City of San Jacinto is going to be operational in April, Rancho Mirage is going to be operational in May, and we're under evaluation right now in the City of Palmdale in the first phase evaluation as it relates to the joining and operating under this model. It is the only operational JPA of this structure and of this type, and it's the only operational CCA or JPA in Southern California Edison territory. The benefit you get is you have an experienced staff. We've operated CCAs as it relates to the staff that's managing this. We procure energy every day on behalf of our residents, we procure energy every day on behalf of Pico Rivera's residents now, and we are doing the evaluation as it relates to Rancho Mirage and San Jacinto as it relates to the procurement strategies for them. The other benefit is you have a phasing opportunity, right? You can start out with Phase 1, which is the analysis of your pro forma specifically to Malibu. What's important is that, is that the other opportunities, if you join, you don't have the opportunity to have an individualized structure and understand how much, so to speak, you're leaving on the table as it relates to local program revenue. At Phase 1, there's an opportunity to say, you can either join another alternative, I can either stay going down this path, but at least you'll have an informed decision as it relates to specifically what revenue opportunities are in Malibu, what your customer load looks like, and what your energy portfolio could be. Phase 2 of that operation is the implementation support. We will, we being the California Choice Energy Authority, will do all the work on your behalf that is informed by you, that is directed by you as it relates to how we implement, but that will be done all by the CCEA. And then Phase 3, the ongoing CCA administration support, we're currently doing that on behalf of Pico Rivera. We will be doing that on the other two cities, and that is another benefit as it relates to the operational side of this. As I mentioned before, the associate members, San Jacinto, Pico Rivera, Lancaster Choice Energy, and Rancho Mirage, which is the newest. What I think is key there is you look at those associate members, all of them have their own moniker, right? It's San Jacinto Power, it's Pico Rivera Innovative Municipal Energy Prime. They brand this themselves, this is their program. And if you look at Pico Rivera's website, you will see no mention of the California Choice Energy Authority. We literally want to operate this behind the scenes, right? We envision this as your program, your city's program. This is not our city's program, this is not Pico's program, this is not San Jacinto's program. This is a collective operation of cities. I liken it to the Contract Cities Association, right? We all have individual roles, but collectively we matter together, right? It's for cities by cities. So, you know, we just happen to work together in accomplishing this goal. What happens in Malibu doesn't impact what happens in Pico, what happens in Pico doesn't impact what happens here. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions or any comments that you may have, and we're here at your disposal.
Rather than, since we're going to be hearing this item later, and it would be kind of weird to ask questions and discussion now, I'd like to ask the council if we could just ask them to stay, and then we can ask questions later during this actual item discussion.
That sounds wise, is that cool?
Ryan with us?
Thank you very much. All right, we are now at written and oral communications from the public. Norm?
Mayor P?
Yes.
Could I give a report on the posting of the agenda?
We would like that, I apologize for skipping that.
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on September 15th, 2017, with the amended agenda and second amended agenda both posted on September 22nd, 2017.
Thank you, Kelsey, I apologize for overlooking that. Norm?
I just have a quick comment about an experience that I had with a potential client that had a piece of property, and he really didn't know what the development standards were in the City of Malibu, so we had a fairly lengthy conversation. And I mentioned to him that the city council met twice every month, and that the planning commission met twice every month. And that it takes a long time to get on the agenda, because these agendas go, you know, every project is looked at in great detail. And they listened to all the public speakers, the people that are in favor and the people that are opposed. And he said, well, how long do they go? And I said, well, they go anywhere between three hours and five hours. And sometimes they get through seven or eight projects, and sometimes they only get through three. And so it takes a long time to get on the agenda. He said, you couldn't pay me enough to do their job. And I said, yeah, they don't get paid anything. They spend literally 15 to 30 hours a week on the public's business, trying to make sure that the City of Malibu maintains its goals and objectives, and is a quasi-rural community, and meets the people's expectations. And the planning commission's exactly the same way. They spend hours and hours and hours looking at projects and comparing them against the standards, always with an eye for the general plan. And I just wanted to let you know that there are people out there, some of which don't know, and some of which do, know how much energy and effort and time you spend on the community's business, along with the planning commission and your staff. And we owe you a debt of gratitude, and thank you for your service.
Thank you, Norm.
I want to say thank you also for serving, although you do get technically paid a pittance every month for your services. The planning commission does not, and that is in the budget. So my second comment has to do with those skylights that are on the city's building project in Winter Canyon, the sewage treatment facility. They're obnoxious, and I know that you tasked the city manager with that job, I think, last meeting, two weeks ago. I'd like to hear a report as to why they're still there, or what's the plan on how to fix those. And the second is that there was a vehicle fire last week that basically totaled the whole SUV in a matter of minutes, and likely to be of electrical origin. So you have another item on tonight, which if I don't have time to be here for, I think there needs to be some fire suppression aspect with the approved high-speed chargers for electric vehicles wherever they're located, and we may need to plot them. At one time, the city's emergency preparedness task force worked to plot swimming pools throughout the town as a resource in case of a fire. In this case, it might be the inverse, if you've got a couple Teslas in your garage, they could be basically bombs ready to go off if something starts to short in their battery system, and that's what happens, the car melts down because it's aluminum. And that, one of those happened in the bottom of Malibu Canyon, you might have remembered a year or two ago. CHP said the car melted. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. We're now at the consent calendar. So we have a couple items pulled. We'll start with the next-gen air transportation system in so-called Metroplex. Oh, my bad. Sorry, I apologize. Laura, go ahead, or Riva, go ahead, city manager update.
Okay. Thank you, good evening. Just a couple of things. I wanted to start out by thanking our beach team from our Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department. They really provide a very valuable service to our community. For those of you who aren't familiar with what they do, what it does is it allows us to have sworn officers and deputies on the sand during the summer, so they operate from Memorial Day to Labor Day. If we just had regular deputies, they'd be in a vehicle, and they wouldn't be able to be out on the sand providing those, that safety for us. And for anybody who's been on the beach in the summer, you know that we're looking at, you know, tens of thousands of people at a given time. So personally, very appreciative of the work that they do. I also wanted to make sure everybody knows that this Thursday, September 28th, at 7:00, we're having a town hall meeting. It's the second in our public safety series, and this one is about mass violence. It's a disturbing topic, but something we feel is very important to talk about with the community and what to do if it's anything that we ever experienced. So it'll be at 7:00 here in this room. And then I just wanted to ask the mayor if you wanted me to respond to Mr. Embry's questions. I know I provided you. So I did provide the mayor and city council with information about Mr. Embry's questions and the light tubes that are on the facility at the wastewater treatment site were, have been part of the design from the get-go. They are all part of things that were approved through the public process, and they're actually an energy-saving device that allows light to come through during the day. An example of them are what we have upstairs in the Surf Rider conference room, and it helps save electricity during the day so that natural light can come in, and very little light would come out at night if the room was used in the evening, which it probably won't be used terribly often. But what I've done is spoken with our public work staff to see if there's any options for some sort of shade that could be closed in the evening that would prevent any light from being emitted. So it was all part of the original design. So I hope that provides enough information. Thank you.
Thank you, Riva, Laura.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming to this city council meeting. I want to start by thanking the beach team because they just rock, they're the best, and they save us during the summer. And if one area, if it's a cloudy day and they're not needed on the beach, then they can be on PCH, and it's really wonderful to have them, and they do an amazing job. And our city manager started a new traffic program in the summer, last summer, and worked very closely with the beach team, and it really has helped a lot, doesn't take the traffic away, especially at Zuma Beach or in the Civic Center area, but especially at the beaches, it really helps a lot. So I want to thank all of them. And Norm, thank you. It's always nice to hear people appreciate what we do, and I know that we all work hard, as does the planning commission. And I think we do it because we're passionate about it and passionate about public service, so, but thank you for that acknowledgement. Just a few things, Rick and Lou and myself and some staff, Riva and Lisa went to the League of California Cities meeting in Sacramento a couple of weeks ago, a week and a half ago. So that was really good, and have a chance to not only learn a lot of things, but meet with other people in other cities and learn from other cities. And did some interesting events while we were there, some team-building things. As, I also had an LA County Library Commission meeting, and we are doing some distance meetings now. So I often am at our local Malibu library, and so we are able to have our commission meetings that are based in different libraries all over LA County or in Downey. So if you ever want to join us, they are publicly noticed meetings, and that is the third Wednesday of every month at 10:00 in the morning. The Boys and Girls Club, as well as Santa Monica College and our local school district, are all helping, and I hope that you can promote this information with trying to contact so-called Dreamers. And as many of you might know, if your registration is due next spring, then you must reregister and get all the paperwork and pay the fee by October 5th. And so the Boys and Girls Club here, as well as SMC and SMUUSD, are helping people with the paperwork and also helping people with the fee, I think it's around $500, to reregister, and if you don't do it by October 5th, you're going to be in trouble. And of course, we don't know where that program's headed, but at least it's very important to make sure that you don't let your registration lapse. And Riva told you about the city town hall, and then this Friday, also the Boys and Girls Club, their wellness center is opening, and so they're going to be having a ribbon-cutting Friday evening, and that is at the back of Malibu High School. And there's been a lot of donors to this, including the city and the Malibu library, so it's going to be a really much-needed center for Malibu. And then just a couple of other things to let you know about. The Friday, October 6th, the City of Malibu is hosting the Face of Malibu exhibit of portrait paintings by a local resident Malibu artist, Joanna Spinks, and that will be upstairs, is it going to be upstairs and downstairs, I guess? And so she has painted over 60 people from the City of Malibu. I was very honored to be her first, I've known Jo for a long time, and it's really a wonderful snapshot of Malibu. She also did this up in Ventura, and the show for that was really good. On Thursday, October 12th, the San Salvador ship visit to Malibu, Jefferson might be telling you more about that, and it's a full-scale sailing replica of the first European ship to explore California's coast. And it's going to be coming to Malibu waters October 12th through the 14th, and it's going to be moored off the Malibu pier. But there's going to be onshore and offshore opportunities, tours, sailing trips for people. And then on Thursday, on Tuesday, October 17th, there's going to be a screening of the film, The Cat That Changed America, and that's, the city's co-sponsoring that with Pepperdine at the Smothers Theater. And it really highlights the big cat, P-22, as most of you, hopefully, most of you know about, the mountain lion that crossed a couple of different LA freeways. So it's going to be a reception and environmental exhibits, and you can find more information on our website. Then one other thing, on the 24th, is our next library speaker series, October 24th, Jeanette Walls of Who Wrote the Glass Castle. And there's also an advanced smart gardening workshop here at City Hall on October 7th. And that's all, thank you.
Lou? And Jefferson, you'll go after Lou.
Thank you.
Well, now I know what I'm going to be doing for the next two months. As Laura said, we attended the League of California Cities Annual Conference, and in addition to the things that we did do, I also, Councilmember Joanne House, when she was a member of this august body, showed me that you can actually go to the city attorney sessions. And we sit next to Mike and Kristi, and you find out all kinds of information about things. It's kind of like a preview of issues that ultimately are going to come before us. So it was very, very interesting. And also, at that annual conference, I wanted to acknowledge our city manager, who was elected as Vice President of the City Managers Division for the California League Contract, or California League of Cities. And last week, I attended the National League of Cities Federal Advocacy Committee hearings in Henderson, Nevada. And this is where the National League of Cities initiates and discusses the positions that the League of Cities is intending to take this next coming year. And I'm happy to say that our resolution on sober houses, sober living homes, has been accepted unanimously by people from all across the country. And our next step is to bring it to the city summit in Charlotte, where if it's approved, which I'm hoping that it will be, we will have, it will be supported by 19,000 cities across the United States. And that will definitely get us the attention of Congress, and we'll be able to explain to them, this is a national bipartisan issue that needs to be addressed in Washington, and this is the way to do it. So. and this is the way to do it. So it was a pretty exciting weekend. I was very happy about that. This week, Riva and I are attending a meeting with Sheriff Jim McDonald and some city officials from the CUS Hollywood to discuss our issue with the liability trust fund and the increasing rates that we think are unsustainable. And we're going to try to find a better way to make that happen. And I'm also attending with Laura, Riva, and Lisa, the Contract Cities Annual Fall Event in Lake Arrowhead on Friday. That's what I have. Thanks.
Jefferson?
Thank you, Skylar. Thank you, Laura, for mentioning the San Salvador visit to the City of Malibu. It'll be a terrific event. I hope many people can attend it. I've received a number of calls and complaints from the residents in Latigo Canyon about the motorcycles and the car racing and the car clubs coming through the city at high rates of speed causing unsafe conditions. I plan on speaking with Jim McDonald, I mean, our Jim, about that situation, and hopefully maybe possibly assigning more hours in the Sheriff's Department to the lower part of Latigo. And I will follow up on that, and thank you very much. That is all I have to report.
Thank you, Jefferson. Rick?
As mentioned previously, I also went to the convention or the conference of the League of California Cities. It's my first time doing it, and it was quite interesting. There's a lot of cities out there, a lot of cities. And it was interesting to see them all assembled in one big giant hall. And you realize, there's a lot of people out there with some similar issues, and then there's some people with some completely different issues. At one table, there was a kid sitting next to me who was 22 years old, and he was a city council member of the city. And I thought to myself, wow, that guy's motivated from a young age. But they came in all shapes and sizes, and there were a lot of good, actionable items that I got from people from other cities having to do with homelessness, short-term rentals, and a whole host of things. So I'm glad I went. I appreciate Lou and Laura and Riva helping me out and kind of showing me the ropes as the guy's still on the bunny slopes of being a city council member. And Norm, thank you very much. It's very nice of you to say those kind words, and you're right. There are people who give a lot of their time to the City of Malibu. And but let's not forget the professional staff that is actually chained to the O R, you know, nine to five, five days a week, doing the really heavy lifting. But thank you very much. It's very nice of you to say that.
All right. Thank you, Rick. Rick and I had a A and F meeting earlier this afternoon with Riva, and that went smoothly. Administration and Finance meeting. On Saturday, I, this past Saturday, I attended the Malibu Board Writers Club. It's their 25th annual day at the beach. It used to be Camp Ronald McDonald for good times, and now they just do a day at the beach where they take a bunch of kids that have different extreme needs, some of them, out in the water. And I got the opportunity to take a bunch of kids out, and that was an awesome, awesome event. I thank them for putting that on. I was at the library last week when they were doing some mental health outreach, and there was a large population of the homeless members in the community there. And I was able to talk with one of the members from the LA County Department of Health that was there and sort of get some outreach on that. And I'm looking forward to some more participation from the county in our area related to that stuff. And I also attended last night the play at the Malibu Playhouse, Butterflies Are Free. And I wanted to congratulate Veronica Brady, who directed that, and all of the local members of the community and the cast that were in that. It was a marvelous play, and there was a really good turnout. And I spent the whole day, the morning today in Arcadia, Santa Anita Park, with a meeting of the LA County Mayors, led by the Mayor of Arcadia and the Mayor of Los Angeles, Eric Garcetti. And I did also invite them to host, maybe Malibu can host one of the meetings in the future. And there was a great presentation on the Olympics, which will be coming to Southern California in 2028. And my hope is that Malibu would have some sort of a role in that, as either a host for the venue of surfing competition or mountain biking. And those are two things that we could offer that are world-class and better here than anywhere else in LA County. So I hope to see some more information on that in the future. And without further ado, let's move forward here. Can I have a motion to approve the consent calendar pulling items 3B5, 3B8, and 3B9?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
May I please have a roll call?
Councilmember Rosenthal?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Mullin?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamont?
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner?
Yes.
Mayor Peak?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We'll start with 3B5, which is the Next Gen Air Transportation System in SoCal Metroplex. I don't know, Riva, how much of a staff report that we have on that, but I think that we were looking to get a little bit of information. I don't know if there are any comments from the public on that.
I don't have anything else to add beside what's in the staff report.
Okay.
I have something to add.
Good. We have a couple of comments, too.
Do you want me to wait till after?
No, go ahead.
Just to throw on the table, you know, we, along with Bob Brager, somebody from my office, attended the roundtable meeting at LAX and learned a lot. Among things, learned what the role of that roundtable group is. And that's basically how you become the squeaky wheel. It is clearly the best way to understand what it is that is going wrong with the program and how to get the FAA's attention. So in addition to sending the letter, I would suggest that the council instruct Riva to, or the city manager, to appoint somebody to regularly attend that meeting and become a part of the roundtable. We thought it was very useful.
All right. Thank you, Christie. So we have a couple of speakers. Is Bill Scott here? And Bill, you've got five minutes, and you'll be followed by Cora Scott.
Actually, could Cora go first?
Actually, yes, she can. Thank you, Cora. And thank you for all your correspondence in regards to this. I know that some people may think it's a lot at times, but I think it's very valuable.
And thank you. Thank you so much for sending someone to the LAX Roundtable, because unless you're there, you really don't understand what's going on. So my, well, I think my husband and I just want to spotlight that, as many things in this country, there's different things that are going on underneath the surface that are not always communicated. So the FAA will tell you that the Next Gen Satellite-Based Air Traffic Control is safer than its predecessor, which is the radar-based. And that is a true statement. That really is. But unfortunately, the FAA coupled two separate and distinct issues and rolled it into one narrative, and that's where the problem is. So the FAA needlessly joined the implementation of the satellite air traffic control with the shortening of flight paths to save airlines' money. And I think all of us would agree that satellite-based GPS make us really safe for drivers, but we, we can use it on side streets as well as freeways. And so I don't think most people here would have a problem with the satellite-based system. What we have a problem with is the FAA forcing jet freeways over a very quiet community. According to the FAA's own website, so I'm not taking things from, you know, crazy blogs. I'm taking, we're taking this data from the FAA's own website that being very honest about it. These flight path changes have been a concerted effort to help corporations save million in flu, in fuel costs, which essentially pushes the negative externalities onto residents instead. United, Southwest, and American Airlines paid $10 million to former senators, now lobbyists, in an effort to privatize the FAA. The airlines, and again, this is from the FAA's website, the airlines will save $7.8 million annually in fuel costs just with the Southern Metroplex alone. And that's not taking in the whole country. The FAA rationalizes these changes by touting carbon savings. But what they didn't study or disclose is the carbon footprint consequences of forcing millions of Californians to use air conditioning to block out noise when they once opened their windows to cool their homes. And that's saying that a lot of Malibu people do not have air conditioning either. According to the U.S. Energy Administration, 49% of California energy is comprised of natural gas, producing a very large carbon footprint. These FAA flight path changes are simply shifting carbon-based emissions and energy costs from the airlines to taxpayers. I'm probably not going to have enough time to finish, but my husband can finish after that. But, but as mentioned, also, the prop planes are a unique problem to Malibu, that they're saying is not a Next Gen problem, but it's a consequence of Next Gen problem. And I have more information on that. But thank you.
Thank you, Cora. Bill?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of the council. So a few things, and observance, we've been attending some of the roundtable meetings recently, and I can see a few problems that can be associated with that. We, the previous meeting last month, the head of the roundtable, Mr. Castaneda, from the San Francisco Bay Area with the SFO airports, presented that after five years of work and trying to negotiate with the FAA, that they actually had a two-year waiting period where they're waiting for a response from a 52-page document from the FAA. And then the response was, we'll, we'll consider your changes. So not much really happened over the course of about five years and tried to negotiate with them. I, what I see at the roundtables is a particular direction that seems logical. The FAA sets the rules, so they should be the ones that people are trying to negotiate with, or to sue in the case of Phoenix. But what that essentially does is it seems that it creates, the FAA is just being used as a firewall for the airlines. And so the airlines aren't incurring any expense or immediacy to address the issue. And so I would consider perhaps, you know, when it comes to launching lawsuits or trying to negotiate with the FAA, that perhaps it, you might, one might consider looking more at the airlines to create more of an immediate need. Another thing that I've noticed with the pursuits of various angles is that a lot of folks who attend the roundtable meetings leave the roundtable with the thought, oh, we need to learn all of this new language, that we have to understand the flight paths and things of that nature. And it's very complicated, and you have to hire, you'll be told, you'll have to hire a consultant who is, you know, a professional, you know, with the airlines and things of that nature to negotiate these waters. But that's doing it in the terms of the FAA. That's trying to, you know, argue your case in different terms, where what I think would be much more valuable is to really keep it simple in that, you know, you don't, you know, Malibu doesn't want loud planes waking people up every three to six minutes at night. There's a certain amount of decibels that can be produced. And when that's brought up, when others bring that up at meetings, it's like, no, 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 we are going to move these planes north, south, east, and west. And that's the terminology essentially that the FAA is listening to, is just moving these things around, where those dimensions are pretty meaningless. It's really the elevation. Where they're saving the money is from the planes, when they take off, if they have to take off at a much steeper elevation, they're saving a lot of gas to get up to 10,000 feet much more quickly. And, or when they're flying at lower altitudes for these longer distances across the country, they're also saving more money by not going up quite so high. So one of the things also that I don't see brought up is essentially with these paths from Northern California and the state of Washington, is when they're flying down the whole coast, is they're essentially turning all of these homes on the bluffs into greenhouses. When you have to have your doors closed at night, it produces a lot of heat or during the day, because the decibels are up to 80 decibels. That's louder than a baby screaming outside our windows about every three to six minutes. And I should say, I'll back up. It's usually around 60 to 65 decibels, but occasionally it's a lot louder when the pilots are not flying within the constraints of the FAA. But there again, that's one of the phenomenas, that they, they're also doing things where they'll send over the planes really, really low for an extended period of time. So then when they raise them up another 3,000 or 4,000 feet, it'll sound like, oh, it's much quieter today. And so people will then be going, oh, well, you must set this limit of 6,000 feet. That's all great if you're used to the aircraft noise in, you know, places by the airport, which most of the people who are affected by this Next Gen system are people living near the airports. But people like us who aren't exposed to the regular sounds, it's a very different thing. There's actually a measure called the Noise Depreciation Index that's been construed, where they can look at the cost of home devaluation as a result of aircraft noise. And in this particular area, looking at the top 42 homes for sale currently, the Noise Depreciation Index is about $178 million is what that's costing potential sellers of the top 42 homes in Malibu. That's all I have. Thank you.
Bill, thank you for that. Ryan?
I am absolutely shocked that the Board of Realtors isn't up here screaming like they were on August 28th, that the property values might take a change if, you know, if a house was 9,000 square feet instead of 10,000 square feet, for instance, because of neighborhood character. This noise impact has more bearing on a lot of Malibu property values than people realize. And it's not just Malibu. It's Newbury Park, and it's Agura, and it's Oak Park area. It's all over, actually, as you're hearing. This is an Etch A Sketch just being ripped up and start over with all these flight plans to whatever works best for the airline industry. As was mentioned before, the noise is an impact. If Jeff Jennings were here, he'd say, it's all about the impacts, all about the impacts. You've got to, well, these are the feds, so I don't know if they care. But you can't change the location of your house. All you can do is take the property devaluation and move. And you're not sure where you should move to, because they could change all these things again. It's really not fair, because Thomas Guide used to show where all the airports were, the nice, beautiful icon, and you could see, like I said, I don't want to move there because, you know, everybody loves the sound of airplanes. That's why there's so many houses in Santa Monica just love living near their airport. This is a total game changer. And I was on Point Doom after midnight, and I saw a huge plane flying low, and I said, that must be military because of what's going on overseas. Now, I think it wasn't. I think it was just one of these new change flight patterns. But it was huge to me, and that told me that it was, I thought it was a huge military plane, but it was flying at very low elevation. So I would seriously request that you join in these efforts and find out more about the economic impact, because the economic value has a very real bearing on how much the city takes in in property taxes. It's a very small percentage of what is actually collected by the county, but if it goes down, it goes down, and that affects what the city gets. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Did anyone, I had a question, sort of, Christie, I guess, is, I understand that, you know, we'll probably wind up sending these letters. I think it's a wise thing to do. But how do we really get a seat with these guys at the table? And what's, you know, is it, does that mean we're sending a council member that's down there to the meeting as well as staff to really, because I see this as an issue that's, you know, really just come online with how some of the flight patterns are changed. And I know that I've noticed it at Point Doom, and I had to sit in my backyard, and I can, you know, see an airplane that's kind of coming down, and it's not as loud. And then you see it kind of go out over the ocean and hit the gas when it's banking a turn, and all of a sudden, it gets loud again. Or when they're ascending and getting higher, you know, when they're, you know, hitting their thrust. And it's definitely something that's going to gravely affect parts of the community, and there's got to be an alternative way.
So two answers. One, we've already talked about, which is getting on that roundtable. And one of the benefits of being on the roundtable is access to, it's Lawa, L-A-W-A, but I can't remember. What is it? Okay, there you go. Los Angeles World Airports. They keep the government data on exactly all of the flights, and they have historic data going all the way back. And so while there's other places you can get the data, that's the data that the FAA would respect the most because it's, you know, kept neutrally. We can go back and look at that and actually see what the changes have been in terms of the elevations over our neighborhoods over the years, and see if it's perception or reality. And I'm assuming it's reality, but that we would have the evidence to support that. And that is the sort of factual basis we would need to open the door for discussions with. with FAA. The speculation at this point, and I don't know, we need to do the work, but the speculation at this point is that the regulation height is probably acceptable, but the planes are not abiding by it. I think Mr. Cole kind of alluded to that, that they may be flying lower than allowed. All of that information would be in Lawa's records.
Wouldn't a pilot have to fly lower than allowed if the aircraft controller tells him to fly at a certain height? All the regulations are out the window, and he has to listen to the air traffic controller, correct? Maybe Rick could answer that better than I can.
That is correct.
That is correct.
Well, they, I do have a lot of experience with this, actually. I flew as a military pilot for 27 years, and on the other side of the fence, giving an example, when they closed Marine Corps Air Station El Toro and they moved to Miramar, although they'd had jets in Miramar for years, they were not happy about the helicopters moving down there, and they were, the natives around the airfield were very organized and very vocal in their complaints, and they forced the military to, when you flew into Miramar, you had to fly at these ridiculous, but very tightly controlled and monitored and supervised, and if you strayed off a path, set paths at high altitude along the freeway to minimize the noise, and do pretty much an autorotation to land in the airfield. And if you didn't, the fax machines went off, exploded at the airfield, and they let the base know about it. Give you another example, if anybody's ever flown out of John Wayne Airport, and you take off, you do like the steepest climb from hell. I mean, it's amazing, you're like, holy crap, what is that all about? And that's because the people in Newport Beach said, we don't want that noise of those airplanes going over our heads like that, and they forced them to do some very unusual high-performance takeoffs out of John Wayne Airfield. So you can get results from these things, but you do have to be organized, and I suspect that there's differences between people doing instrument approaches, which I think they're supposed to be above 9,000 feet here, and then when they do visual approaches, they can kind of slink down to visual altitudes, but in my mind, commercial aircraft shouldn't be doing that. And I've noticed it over my house, I'm in western Malibu, and I think the people in the eastern part have it worse over Big Rock and Pacific Palisades, but my wife tells me, yep, 11:30, 2:30, and 4:30, there's a 747 that goes right over our house, and it seems to be getting lower with time. So I wanted to thank Cora and everybody else who sent letters in, and bringing this to our attention, because we've all noticed it a little bit, we're kind of like, hey, what the heck is that? And I think the expression that one of the emails said was, it's the old, you know, slow boil of the frog, after a while you don't really notice it, and then next thing you know, hey, we've been living with it for years, and that's the way it is. But I'm glad we engaged. Bob, thanks for going down there, Bob's a licensed pilot, so he speaks that lingo, and I think we need to engage further and stay engaged, and we're kind of late to the game, to be honest with you, but not too late, really. And there's no reason, really, when you think about it, that all these planes coming in for a landing and flying over the coast, paralleling the coast, can't move out to sea a little further. I mean, there's not as many houses out there over the ocean as there are right here in the hills, and that's a good point, because with the elevations, you know, I know some of the elevations up in the hills are 1,400 feet, so if your plane's at 6,000 feet, now you're less than, you know, 5,000 feet separation. So I, we need to have somebody engaged and go to all these things, and we need to do the historical analysis, figure out where the credible information is, and get in there and represent the residents. I just wanted to say thanks to the people who have been beating the drum here, and we're a little late to the game, but I think now we're going to get fully engaged.
And I'd like to just, our neighborhood has been severely impacted by this, and probably worse than anybody at the moment. And so I would like to actually ask Reva to nominate Bob Brager and us to nominate Rick to represent us at this roundtable, because they both speak FAA, and, you know, I think that's the best way we can do it.
Rick, do you accept that? If we, would you mind attending a handful of these meetings?
Yeah, no problem, I would love to. If I'm available, I'll go, no problem.
Okay. All right, so I'll make them. So, and then Lou will also be making a motion to send these letters immediately to the reference agencies.
Absolutely, that's the motion I'm making.
Okay, so we'll go for roll call.
Who seconded that motion?
Laura.
Councilmember Lamont?
Yes.
Councilmember Rosenthal?
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Mullen?
Yes.
Mayor Peak?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And Jefferson, I apologize, because I forgot that you were on the air there, but in the next item, if you have any comments, just speak up.
Certainly.
All right, thank you. We're now at 3B8. Which was the collection of fees for electric vehicle charging stations? And do we have any public speakers? No. Okay, so Bob, I read through this, I read through the staff report, and I just wanted to say, is there any particular reason as to why, why don't we just keep the existing chargers and add more of them? Is there a reason that we need to replace these, other than the fact that they're not charging for power? I thought there was kind of an incentive to do it, was to get people to use electric vehicles, and maybe if we're going to put in some more high-powered charging units, we could charge for those, or something. I'm a little unclear on that.
Well, we could use these vehicles, nothing wrong with it, except there's, two of them have been changed in 2011, there's three out there, two of them have been changed in 2011 to operate the Tesla, the Nissan Leaf, the Chevrolet Volt. However, there's one there that still, it's an old one, it's supposed to accommodate the RAV4 Toyota, and that one's kind of obsolete now, so we can change that. But as far as the purpose of actually coming to council to actually consider charging, is that the cost, we start off with basically, I think the cost was about $360 a year for electrical and operational costs, and now it's over $7,000. And that's, you know, most communities are charging for that. There are manufacturers that do make these charging equipment, and they also provide the options for payment, and a lot of people that use these electrical vehicles are kind of used to that already, so.
Go ahead, Laura.
Do we, you know, I don't pass the ones on Civic Center Way that often, but I do notice they're almost always used, and I wonder if, do we have an issue, because I saw that you want to charge if they're there for a certain amount of time. Do we have a problem with somebody plugging in at 9:00 in the morning, and then they leave it there all day, and then they come back and get their car later so that other people can't use it?
Yeah, my understanding, it is a problem, that they basically leave their car all day. If we had these new chargers and new pay system, they would be actually be, if their cars were fully charged, let's say it takes about four hours or whatever, fully charge their car, but they care to leave it there, they would get charged for actually hooking up to the system, and basically, I don't want to say the word, but penalized for being there.
So the way it is now, at least from what I read, it's actually decreasing the access to these chargers, because people are just, since they're not paying, they're just leaving it there all day.
That is correct. Is that correct, Travis?
That is correct. We have had quite a few complaints about people who are leaving their car there for eight and 10 hours, and so other people can't get to the chargers, so that was one of the reasons for bringing this forward as well.
All right, and my only recommendation is this, is that as the electrification continues to happen, and I guess the only person that does have an electric vehicle that's up here, my recommendation would be that as more and more of those vehicles are on the road, that we look at putting in more than just three in the city on that street. So it would make more sense to me if we maybe looked at expanding that to six or 10 in that area, and if we're going to go out and get bids for what those costs are, I would like to see that happen as well.
Certainly, we could do that.
I completely agree about adding more, and I know that we are adding more here, but rather than having them all at the same place, because then, you know, you have certain, because you have to have handicap spaces there, and like for the farmer's market, or for all of those things, once you start taking away more spots, so I'd like to see, maybe at the bluffs or other city-owned, I don't know where else, properties at Las Flores or at Trancas, those kinds of places, I'd rather spread it out a little bit, if possible.
Now, the only other issue with that is, this location here is equipped, already has the electrical supply for EV chargers. If we're going to go to, you know, other locations, we'd have to actually bring in Southern Cal Edison to put in the electrical, so it would just be an extra charge, but they're not that expensive, they're really not.
Even like at the bluffs and stuff, we don't have it?
We don't have any existing power that's at that capacity adjacent to parking spaces, maybe in one or two areas, but my.
We'd probably have to.
Bob, my suggestion would be to, when this goes out for RFP, you can look separately at changing of those three stalls, but in addition to that, why don't we get a proposal to add maybe three in that space and add two of them at Bluffs Park?
Okay.
And maybe you could, I know that there was a conversation that was possibly had with Tesla about this, and maybe looking at some high-powered stations, so maybe they would want to participate in some, at that, in some aspect, and you could talk with them about that.
We can contact them and see what they have to offer.
Great.
And I'd like to note that you're not the only person with an electric.
Oh, sorry, 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 I did see that in your driveway, I apologize.
Not a Tesla, but it's a Fiat, but it's all-electric.
And it's awesome, isn't it?
We're all doing it, it's like pretty awesome.
Mine has an extension cord.
All right, so I'll make a motion to approve that.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
With the changes.
Mayor Peak?
Yes.
Councilmember Rosenthal?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamont?
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Mullen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, next item is the professional services agreement for the City Hall solar project.
Yes, sir. Here to answer any questions?
Do we have any public speakers on that? No? Okay. I just was, the concern of mine is in relation to the timeline, it seems like this project is looking, when I read through, it's like 12 to 18 months till this can be realized. It seems like it was a year or two ago that we were talking about this, maybe it was two years ago, and I don't understand why it's taking so long.
Well.
I just do not get it.
Well, our consultant, actually, due to the design, they indicated that it would be about 10 months or so for this particular design. I think, and I also feel for you, I don't know why it can't be compressed. I know what we'd like to do was, our approach was to come up with a concept first, find out what the demand here at the City Hall is for electrical, come up with a concept, run it by the commissions, then come by to, come to council, and with the preliminary design, and then see what, if council wants to go into final design, we can, then we go into final design, and then they can finalize it. I think it's a little excessive on the time, and maybe we could accelerate, you know, the project, or the consultants.
Reva, correct me if I'm wrong, but we have the money in the budget to do the project, is that correct?
I'll need to look whether we put the funding for the construction in as well.
We put a million dollars in, because remember, it was only going to be for design, and we wanted to add the money.
Correct, correct. So the funding is in the budget, just to refresh the council's memory, one of the reasons this has taken so long was originally we were going to do a power purchase agreement, and that, we went through that entire process and brought that forward, and then determined that wasn't in the city's best interest to do, and so kind of took a pause, and then waited until we adopted the budget this year to move forward with all of the design. So I can certainly work with Public Works Department to see if there's any way to shorten it, but I think we're on a pretty good track right now, so I appreciate your patience.
I would like to see this come back in six months with a final design, so can you execute that?
I certainly can, and as, but again, we'd like to come back first with a concept, bring it to the commissions and the council, and see if, you know, we'd like approval on that before we actually do the final design.
No, I understand that, I mean, the concept is pretty clear, it's zero net energy building, so let's design it, let's get it on the roof, and let's get it in the parking lot, and let's get some EV chargers and be done with it, and get it built.
Okay, six months.
Because we're still paying for carbon, and I'm not into it, so.
Okay.
All right, thank you. May I have a, I'll make that motion. Have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Mayor Peak?
Yes.
Councilmember Rosenthal?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamont?
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Mullen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We're now at 4A. No, we're not at 4A, because we don't have a 4A. We're at 6A. CCA program. Craig?
Good evening, Mayor's Peak and council. We're here tonight to, I'm going to just give you a brief update on community choice aggregation. You heard a presentation from the Lancaster folks on their program. Also in the audience tonight is Gary Gero from the County of Los Angeles with their program, if there's any questions. I'm also with, tonight up here with me is the consultant that we have for the solar project, but he's also, it's Bright Wave Energy, knows an awful lot about energy and the procurement of it, and a bunch of things that are going on, so he's here also to answer questions as we move through this tonight. At the end of, I'll do a short presentation, because a lot of this was already presented tonight, I don't want to duplicate a lot of things, but we'll be able to, there's a couple of things I'm going to recommend at this, end of this presentation to council, and then try and move this forward, and as soon as possible, to get the city enrolled into one or the other of the CCA programs. So just briefly, and how the aggregation works, have you seen this before, that the source of the CCA is to buy in the building of electrical supply, the delivery is by, would be by Southern California Edison, and then the customer would be purchasing that energy as a CCA member. A quick overview of the CCA is regulated by the California Public Utilities Commission, and then jurisdictions such as the city of Malibu have the ability to opt in to participate in those programs. And so what we would be doing is passing an ordinance to adopt a CCA program, one of the three that we've currently heard presented, and then as a benefit to the citizens and the businesses of the city of Malibu, if they decided they didn't want to participate in a CCA, they have the ability to opt out. So you're not forcing anybody to purchase through a CCA and the benefits that come through Just a brief background, there are three different types of CCAs that we've looked at. There's the individual cities, which is an enterprise fund, we really haven't made a presentation, but that's just an option that the city could consider, but it's not really what the staff considers a great option. There's the multiple-city JPA, the Joint Power Authority, and you've had a presentation from LA County and South Bay Clean, or Clean Energy, and those are both under that type of JPA, and then tonight, which you heard from the folks from Lancaster, is like a managed service, where they provide all the services and manage the contract for the city. Each type has their own advantages and disadvantages, and one of the things we'll be looking at moving forward is which better fits the city and the city's needs, and has a better presentation for CCAs in the city. Just to do briefly, look at this on the CCAs and allowing the choices, so currently, if you just mostly look at the residential structure there for the SCE classes, the Southern California Anderson with 33% renewable, has about a 17 cents per kilowatt, the CCA with 33 would be a little bit cheaper. If you'd had, you elected to go with 50% renewables, then the price is still competitive and below what it is for SCE, and then the city could elect, if the CCA decided to do that, to go to 100% renewable, the prices then go up a little bit, and it would probably cost more than currently would be provided by SCE, but it does provide you with an option that you're getting all clean renewable energy, and meeting some of the mandates by the state, both through the governor for 2030 and 2050, so there is a benefit to doing that, and if the city wants to send a message that they are a sustainable city and have that option, so that is there, that's something to consider as we move forward with this. So the types of participation, the individual enterprise, there are a few, Apple Valley and Clean Power San Francisco. Under the JPA system, there's the County of, LA County, and also these other cities that are listed there. The other one that was presented down at the bottom, South Bay Clean Energy, was an option, and then there's the hybrid JPA, that's the Lancaster Choice Energy, and as they said, Barbara Boswell said earlier, they have Pico Rivera and Santa Sinto, and there's some other cities that are considering that as well, so it's definitely an option that the city needs to look at carefully. What the city really needs to consider is the type of the differences in the What the city really needs to consider and is the type of the differences in the structure and the design and the individual, what the JPA offers, what the hybrid offers. And this chart just kind of outlines what the, you have, how much control, how much vote and how much say-so you have in the JPA as you set that up. So there's a little bit of differences there. And each of those has, like I said before, a benefit and a little bit of disadvantage to it as well for the city. So this is kind of a chart to show what the difference in the structure design. The JPA system, you don't have a lot of control, but you don't have a lot of risk with that. With the hybrid JPA, you're increasing how much control you have in the system. There is a little more risk associated with that. And if you went into the individual or the enterprise system, you are a complete control of that, but there is a lot more risk to the city financially that can come about for that. So it's just kind of weighing the differences of what the city wants to do. How much risk do we want to take? How much control do we want to have over the energy that we offer to our citizens in the city? So the next step is really to review all of this. What staff is recommending and we recommended in the staff report was that the City of Santa Monica, or first let me say that staff is involved with a number of other cities just having communication of where they are with establishing a CCA. There's a lot of the cities and locally here in the, in the South Bay region, kind of watching to see what's going on. And so that's kind of what we've been doing as well, just looking to see who's moving, doing what, joining which CCA's. The city or the County of Los Angeles has theirs in place now. And I think Gary can answer questions, but I think they'll be starting to serve customers, I believe, in January, and which is a great thing. So that's, that is up and going to be up and running and it's something that is a very viable option for the city to consider. The other thing is the City of Santa Monica has gone out and they've hired the UCLA Luskin Center to do a study and analysis of the three different JPAs and which would best fit the City of Santa Monica. Now, obviously the City of Santa Monica is a full-service city. It is not the City of Malibu, but I think there's a lot to glean. We checked with their staff last week. That report is due out in mid-October. It would be some time to look at that report and review it, see what they're making a recommendation, how that fits for the city. That gives us ample time. If we wanted to select the County of Los Angeles, they have an opportunity that there's no cost to join theirs until the end of the year. It gives us ample time to still consider and do that. But it gives us a little more background and understanding of what these different JPAs offer and what may be the best solution for the city. Now, along with that, I'm also making a recommendation. I'd like to get a motion tonight. I'd like to have an elected official appointed that would be, and the staff is recommending that be the mayor, that participates in the selection. Because if we join a CCA, we're going to have to have a person on the board of directors for that. And that should be an elected official making the decisions for the citizens of Malibu. And so I'd like to get that, either a motion tonight to select one or at least consideration for the near future that somebody would be named that would represent the city as an elected official. So that's a motion I'd like to see tonight. For the last thing on this item, I also have with me, as I mentioned earlier, Paul Huer from Bright Wave Energy. We're recommending that you authorize the city manager to sign a contract with him as a consultant to review and assist the city in making final decisions. I think it's a prudent thing to do, given the complexities of these JPAs and all the things that it means, but also assessing the risk and assessing the value with that. And with his background in energy and energy consumption, I strongly recommend that we engage a consultant to deal with that. So with that being said, that's my presentation. Answer any questions you may have. Paul's, or to answer any questions. And as I said, there's the other folks from the County of Los Angeles and from the Lancaster folks that were here earlier.
Thank you, Craig. Laura?
Thank you very much. So Paul, are you doing our solar design thing in six months? That's, you don't have to answer that. I was just, it was just, sorry. Yeah, I have, I have a few questions. Does the city, if we join the regular CCA, you know, with a JPA, does the city get to choose, does each city get to choose, we want 50% renewable, 20%, 100%, or is it the whole JPA decides? I know, I just want to make sure that I-
Yeah, it's the whole JPA that decides. You have one vote. So when you're part of that, then you have a vote to get in there. So if Gary wants to answer, he's-
Gary, why don't you come on up and tell me about LA County? Because I'm just, you know, I've been reading different things and I thought I knew the answers to some of these. And then I just want to hear them from somebody in a meeting that's recorded that I can then-
Right. And I know there's a lot of information out there and a lot of options, so it can get confusing. We recognize that different cities have different priorities. And so we've created a structure that allows each individual jurisdiction to decide for itself what the default energy offering is. So you could be offering 100% renewable energy next year if you wanted, or 50% and getting to 100% in two or five years, whatever your schedule is.
Okay, so don't move. I don't know who, maybe you can answer this at least for your JPA. Also, does, does a city get to choose, okay, we want, let's say 50% renewable and I, we want 40 of that to be solar and tend to be hydro? Or do they get to choose what makes, you know, what that renewable is, where that renewable is coming from?
We hadn't got to that level of detail yet and how we're procuring our portfolio, but if you indicated that upfront while, before we go out and buy power, we could probably manage that.
I did notice, and maybe, so Luskin does have some kind of, I mean, we, they did have all the information here and I just noticed that different JPAs or cities have a wide variety of where they get their renewables. So, okay, again, I don't know who can answer these, but in, let's say, the county JPA, does the city get to keep any additional revenue or if they're-
So there are, we didn't specify that in the Joint Powers Authority agreement itself, but as we've been talking to cities, every city has expressed an interest in having some portion local return so that they could support EV infrastructure, for instance, or solar PV or whatever it happens to be. So, and because it's one member, one vote, and most of the members, if not all of the members, including the county, probably wants a little local return to be able to have that sort of local flexibility. My guess is that that'll be something the board actually adopts.
Okay, because I know that that was a difference between the hybrid, the way it was presented and the regular. I just had, I thought I had another one. Why don't you go, oh, I know what it was. I don't know if Edison still does this, and I thought they did, that they could spread out the, the energy costs throughout the year so that, you know, in Southern California with, with air conditioning, you weren't paying so mu, or whatever. I don't know if they still do, but is that something that the JPA can do?
Edison does still offer that program. And as we're now starting to look at what kind of rates and rate structures will provide and incentives, that's one of the items we'll be looking at as well. We haven't made those decisions. We've frankly, the board has now met twice, the board of the JPA, but we've been telling cities that we're not going to make major decisions till you join us. So we're trying to hold off all of those kinds of big decisions until you're there at the table.
Okay. I'll ask some more after other people have a chance. Thank you.
Can you tell me how many cities already joined the JPA for the county?
Four cities have currently joined and others are scheduled.
And is Los Angeles part of that? They have their own power, right?
LA DWP is not eligible. This is only in Southern California Edison territory.
Okay. That's my question. I do, I think that if we're going to discuss this motion, I completely support the idea of the mayor being our representative. And the other thing is if we decide to go with a consultant, when we were in Sacramento, Laura and I had dinner with Henry Stern. And Henry said, we discussed this issue coming up. And the one thing that he did say is that, you know, when you finally begin to get all your presentations, you're going to hear a lot of great things. He says, but be very careful because you need to hear the disadvantages in detail as well. And I know that basically, you know, the disadvantages were, you know, three words. And I'd like to get a little bit more from that, from all our different sources when the time comes.
Jefferson, did you have any questions?
Yes, thank you, Skylar. My main concern is with exit fees. And I know we can address that in the future. The hybrid, the hybrid system, when we went through this earlier, not this evening, but when we reviewed it several months ago, with the 50% renewable seemed a conservative way to go. But the exit fees are what we have to watch out for. We'll be told what those are if the system isn't working. However, any of the savings that are offset, if we were to look at savings, would be taken up by a consulting contractor. I think it's a little premature for the contractor. I know Craig wants one and suggests one, but we still can, you know, review what Luskin has provided the City of Santa Monica. Because that, that information, once it's out there, anybody's to retrieve. I think it's premature for, like I said, premature for a consultant and let's watch out for the exit fees. That's where these things get compounded and where you start to lose the benefits. And then you lose control eventually of your position on the, if we were to go for the hybrid. Thank you.
Thank you, Jefferson. The, are there many exit fees or many people that have left the thing that's in Lancaster? Thank you, Gary. Everybody is charged an exit fee. So if you're a member of a CCA, you will be charged an exit fee, whether you're in the county or in the city. The challenge with the exit fee or the PCIA is it fluctuates. It is a direct relationship to the price of energy in the marketplace. So it's hard to explain, but if energy, if energy rates are down, the PCIA is up. If the energy rates are up, the PCIA is down because it's a factor of the difference between what Edison bought pre-existing contracts for. So there's, there's the market condition. The challenge with PCIA, when you talk about the risks, is there is a legislative and PUC conversation happening that is going to impact potentially the way that PCIA is calculated. And we have yet to understand what that's going to be. So it's the, the lack of knowledge as it relates to what that PCIA is. But that PCIA is charged to everybody who leaves their investor-owned utility or their default provider at this point. Go ahead, Laura. I think Laura had another question.
I mean, I, I don't know who is the best person to answer this, so you're standing up there now. So whichever, if we choose to join one, whichever one it, you know, we all heard a lot this summer and especially during the heat wave, I don't know, a month ago, about flex alerts and all of that. Would that still be something that we would be dealing with? More, less, or no difference?
That would be no difference in a, in a CCA program. And to answer your question from earlier, you, every one of your residents is still an SCE customer. So the rates you set and the programs you implement are, or the programs they implement are the same programs that will continue to be implemented. Our residents still have the Summer Peak Program. They still have the Energy Efficiency Program available to them. They have the Level Pay Plan that you referenced available to them. They have an over-generation from a solar perspective. If they over-generate, you would set the rate of how much they get paid for over-generation. Our city council set the rate for ours. So those who have solar on their rooftop, if they overproduce, I think Edison's charging about, or paying about two and a half cents. Ours is around six cents. So we've actually doubled what Edison pays you back for over-production. Under the hybrid model, you would have that authority to set those rates.
Well, that was brilliant because that was one of my next two questions about the people with solar and the prices. And then the last question is, and I read it somewhere in here or something, it said there's been a long decline of renewable energy prices. So they're a good deal, but what if they go up? What does that mean?
Correct. What, what happens is every January Edison will do an ERA filing. It's E-R-R-A. Not sure what it stands for. But it's their energy component of their rate setting. So this is the energy side of the bill. This is what we compete against. Theirs fluctuates, just like yours would fluctuate based on the commodity price of energy at a period of time, your arrears. So you, we monitor that very closely. We've structured and hedged our energy product so that we can move to the market as Edison does. So Edison's pricing will move to the market. Yours will move to the market as well. So in a low-energy pricing environment, the energy you will be buying will be at low prices as well. In a high-energy pricing market, the energy you'll be buying will be a higher price. There is some, I guess, misnomer about the cost of renewable energy because what happens is, and it's, it's unique in the sense if you buy your own renewable energy site, you're, you're buying the energy from that company at a certain price, but you're selling it to the grid at another price at the, at the node in which you connect. So it's not necessarily a one-to-one price. Depending on the node pricing has an impact on what your total cost of your energy is on the, on the retail side of things. So it's, there's a little complication there, but typically, your energy rates will follow and track the energy marketplace. No, Laura, I think the other part of that too is that I think that typically what we've seen in the market is that the renewable costs have come down significantly as to where they were 20 years ago. And maybe some of the costs that were incurred by Edison on long-term power commitments were at a higher price for some of those renewables than what they are today. And that's how these CCAs are basically able to function, is they're able to go out and procure power at a cheaper rate than someone with a long-term contract is.
Right. But, yeah, and that's what, you know, the first sentence, but I was just asking what happens if they've been cheaper. And, and that's a good explanation of, of why. And so with your model, with the hybrid, do you have to be your own city's, do you have to do it as a city and then you join in with you?
The way it's structured is your city would be your own CCA. So yes, you would, you would have your own connection point to the grid. You would have your own schedule coordinator. You, I should say your own. The CCEA would do that on your behalf, but you are your own CCA. So you have autonomy in certain decision-making, or you have autonomy in all the decision-making. The, the operation side of it is handled by this JPA. So yes, you would, it would all be yours. And Gary, I have a question for you, just in terms of delivery. So if the city were to join the county's, you know, program, and it would be my recommendation that we did not make a decision on that at night, as, as Craig referenced, that we, we wait to get that report and look at it. But in terms of delivery and availability to customers in Malibu, so if we come back and we decided in November, after reviewing that report or before the end of the year that we wanted to join the county's CCA, when would our customers be able to procure or to, to, to join this as a, as a residential rate-paying customer or business rate-paying customer?
Right. Although, and it's true, not just for yours, but for everybody's, including people in the unincorporated area of the county, we're going to start delivering to customers besides the county's municipal accounts no later than June of next year. So if you're in by November, December, in June, we're going to start rolling out to actual customers for everybody. In the meantime, we're just testing the transition of the system between, between Southern California Edison and, and the county's accounts. We've got 2,000 accounts that will be the guinea pig.
And in that, that meantime of what you guys are looking at doing in, in the, in terms of the unincorporated county and the county's accounts, are you guys looking at going in at a 50% renewable rate? Is that sort of the baseline rate that many cities have elected? And are you able to deliver that at a lower cost than current rate is for power from Edison at a 33% renewable?
What the Board of Directors, or Board of Supervisors actually directed was that for county facilities, that all county facilities be at the exact same cost as what they're currently paying Edison, wherever that shakes out for renewable. So we're looking at between 60 or 70% renewable for county facilities.
Thank you. Did you have another question, Laura?
No, I appreciate, I, I think I've heard Gary's presentation four times or something so far at different associations and everything. And I learn something new every time and I appreciate you coming in. I would also agree that, that it's good, I, I want to hear what the Luskin Center says. They're a really good organization. So I think we'll learn a lot, but we aren't Santa Monica. And I, my understanding was that that was why we needed our own consultant and I think $7,000. This is a big decision. And I, I support, I understand what you're saying, Jefferson, but I really, I want all the unbiased information from the experts that I can get. So I would also support waiting and then also getting the consultant to help the city.
So I'll make a motion to, for us to, to receive and file the, the information on the options, direct staff to review the Luskin Center, appoint the mayor, and then also to, to direct an appropriate funding in the amount of $7,000 to, to get ourselves a consultant.
I'll second that.
Recommend that consultant be on board to, to start-
Recommend that consultant be on board to, to start, uh, right, probably right about the time that that report is available. And then, and, sorry, say that again? You're right, Ryan. Before we get there, I have your slip right here. I apologize. Public comment, Ryan Embry.
Nobody seconded the motion. That's great. Oh, you did? Okay. Um, I was here when you started this before, as you were, and there were two promises made, and that was that both the rates would decline and the percentage of renewables would go up under any of these programs. And one of them presented tonight did not qualify. I don't think you'd go there, but that's the one where the rates would be even higher than what the residents of this town are already paying Edison for electricity. So I'm not sure why that variable was presented to you because I didn't think we were going to go into a program that would penalize Malibu residents economically for the same amount of electricity that they would otherwise buy, based on what's truly a social program to determine what type of energy is purchased. So I want to be, uh, clear that your goal, I thought, was to lower the cost of energy and at the same time increase the amount of renewables and not exceed that. The exit fees are troubling, but I think what was missing from the report is the net metering concept in California has kind of gone out the window. And you have experts here who should speak to you on that and why we're getting pushed and bounced in different directions now, um, from what was different a year ago or six months ago. And that is the low level of buyback for anybody who happens to have a system that's got clean panels and producing good energy and their kids went to college. And so now they've got three empty bedrooms and they're generating electricity to help solve our problems during the peak time of the day when the sun is out, the most energy is used in commercial and they're getting hardly anything in return for it.
Ryan, I, I appreciate that comment. I think that was kind of addressed with how, uh, they're saying that you can increase the cost for the amount of money that you're giving, uh, rate payers that are generating power. And that's up to, that's going to be up to the CCA at that time to decide that.
Yeah. But that is a, a very different shift of concept that was not disclosed previously, is that we're going to offer a better deal to anybody who has a solar system on their house. They're going to get three times as much for the overage of the size of their system at any given time that's feeding the grid. I would hate to see one be at the expense of the other. I think that should be neutral, um, in some degree. But, and lastly, I want to say adding a, some other layer of bureaucracy, of administration that's, you've got to have a, a purveyor of, of a consultant to monitor, an advisor and all this, that's going to add into costs. And they'll be very careful of that because that would be a forever cost. And it certainly should not be a profit center for any outside company where they get a percentage of something or the amount of energy involved because I think that's a fixed, uh, cost. If you wanted to make a social statement to, um, the city, you have the ability to put your money where your mouth is. And that is that the city gets 5% of the cost of electricity that is used in the city as a billing fee for not really doing much. You could waive the 5% for people who have a solar thing on their roof or who save a certain amount. So you do have the ability to amend the tax, reduce it or waive it. There must be some, maybe we'll have to vote on it. I don't know if we're going to increase it, but not to lower it.
Um, thank you, Ryan. So, uh, back to this, uh, receiving, file, direct staff to review the Luskin when that come, the report comes back from Santa Monica. Appoint the mayor as the elected official to represent the city in the selection of the CCA option. And, um, do we have consensus on hiring a consultant? I know that we have already approved funding. Is that correct, Riva? In the budget for this, at seven, the amount of $7,000? I don't know what the report is that we're going to get for $7,000. So the, is that something that everybody wants to do or do you want to leave that part out for now?
I'd support that. I'd agree with Laura that, uh, you know, it's a big decision and, uh, your staff recommends it and, uh, I think we should support this stuff.
All right, let's do a roll call.
Mayor Peak?
Yes.
Councilmember Rosenthal?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamont?
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner?
Epstein.
Mayor Proton Mullin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, guys, for coming this evening. Um, we're now at item 6B, which is the FEMA flood insurance rate maps. Go ahead, Bob, and then we have a couple of public comments.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, uh, Mayor Peak and distinguished members of Malibu City Council. Item before you is a request to provide direction to staff on implementing the FEMA preliminary floodplain maps. I have with you, uh, Rob, Assistant Public Works Director, Rob DeBeau. He's going to do a quick presentation. Go ahead, Rob.
So I'm going to give you a little brief background on FEMA's program. FEMA's National Flood Insurance Program provides subsidized flood insurance to property owners within the city. Currently, right now, residential, um, insurance policies are $250,000 for buildings, $100,000 for content. For commercial buildings, it's $500,000 for the building and $500,000 for content. The subsidized flood insurance program is available for property owners within the city that participate in the program and, um, so long as the city participates in or, or adopts FEMA floodplain regulations. Malibu Municipal Code, Section 1520, creates development standards for, uh, those structures and buildings that are built in the FEMA flood zone. Lastly, FEMA does produce flood insurance maps and those maps are used to, uh, set the insurance premiums. Currently, the FEMA floodplain maps were adopted in 2008 and in December 2011 FEMA started the process of revising those floodplain maps along the California coastline. They just recently finished up the revisions in Northern California and now they're working on Southern California within their city. The preliminary floodplain maps, uh, revise, uh, not only the flood zones in some areas, but also raise the, the flood elevations along our coastline. Currently, right now, FEMA has a 90-day appeal period, which was, which is from August 9th to, uh, November 6th. And anyone can appeal those, those regulations or those map revisions so long as they provide FEMA with some technical data that supports their appeal. On, uh, August 26th, uh, staff, staff conducted a public hearing with FEMA to give a presentation on their revisions to, to these maps. And, uh, in August 2018 FEMA has mentioned that these maps will be, uh, most likely be approved by FEMA after they've gone through all of the appeal process and gone through all the comments. So, um, staff is currently, um, looking for direction from council because these preliminary maps have an impact on new development. Because of these projects probably won't get finished before August 2018, when these new maps will be in place, we're looking for direction. And so, uh, we come up with three different options council can look at. These are just three options. Other options could be available. We just, we just thought these options were most applicable. First option was to, for new developments to, to actually be avail, to be evaluated based on the new FEMA preliminary maps. It's anticipated that these projects will be completed after, after, uh, August 2018 and, um, and if that's happens, then the maps, these preliminary maps will ensure that these property owners would receive the lowest, uh, insurance rates possible for, for these properties. This option would also raise the structures and, and in some situations, they may raise above the, the street level. Lastly, um, I, I discussed this with, um, several Southern California agencies throughout and, and they are implementing the, uh, the new floodplain, um, maps currently. Option, option two would be to, to evaluate the new developments based on the current flood, floodplain maps. Um, this option, this option, property owners will be subjected to higher insurance rates premiums or possibly even denied insurance premiums if the project is completed after 2018 in August. Then the last one, the last option, this is the most drastic, uh, last option is to, for the city to opt out of the FEMA, uh, National Flood Insurance Program. If we do this, uh, that we would, that we would join another, uh, California city, the only one, which I think is in Northern California, which would opt out of this program. Um, it's also, option would, would also require property owners to obtain, uh, private flood insurance, which would be significantly higher than if they got insurance through, through FEMA. These are the three options that we're seeking, seeking direction from council and staff is available for questions.
Thank you, Rob. We have a couple of public comments. Norm Haney, followed by Paul Grisanti, followed by Don Schmitz.
Good evening again, uh, city council members. Chair Peak. Um, I have a lot of problems with all of the options, actually. The wave-up rush engineers that I've talked to that have been studying the coastline in Malibu for the past 50 to 60 years and between them have a tremendous amount of experience, they have yet to be able to duplicate the elevations that are referenced in the new FEMA, uh, floodplain maps. They've asked for the technology used and how it was done and they haven't received it. And this is very troublesome. Um, science is supposed to be able to be duplicated and we're talking about David Weiss, Reggie Brown, there's at least two or three other ocean engineers that, and, and how we do it is we take high tide, then we raise that with a storm surge, and then we take the highest wave, uh, that we can come up with, and then the safe elevation is two feet above that. And we consider rise of sea level over time. FEMA does not consider rise of sea level and they still have an elevation, sometimes two, three, four, five, six feet above our highest elevations. There's something wrong. Now, I don't know if FEMA is trying to save money. I don't know what it is, but there's something seriously wrong with the science used by FEMA. So we should challenge that. The insurance, it's not much. $250,000 for a beachfront home doesn't mean a whole lot. However, the problem is the FDIC won't back the loan if you don't have FEMA insurance. Now, I, I don't know whether they allow you to get insurance from another carrier. But I think we should find out what the science is and find out why our ocean engineers can't make the same calculations, especially when you find that on one side of a line, the height is two feet higher than on the other side of the line on FEMA's maps. And sometimes that line goes between someone's property, right through the middle. Obviously, there's something wrong with that. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Norm. Paul Grisanti, followed by Don Schmitz.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I want to compliment you on how quickly you're getting through everything today. You're doing a great job. You may actually get to be out of here, be it by 10 o'clock tonight. When I, when I looked at, when I pulled up the agenda and I pulled up the package and pulled up the, the amended package and looked at this item and I said, "Where the hell are the maps? There's no maps here." So you're being asked to accept the maps that you, you haven't seen. I know that Lou saw them because he was at that meeting and I know that Jefferson saw it because he was at that meeting with FEMA, but theoretically, you haven't even seen the maps. You don't know how much different they are than, than what was before. So at the FEMA's meeting, which, uh, was at the end of August, they were asked questions about how the maps were created and how, what, how their calculations were done. They didn't, they wouldn't share that information. There was nowhere that it was written down. They kept telling the people that Norm was talking about, "Oh, meet me, with me privately." How are we as a city supposed to mount a technological challenge to what they have done if we don't have the technique they used to arrive at the numbers that they're, and develop those maps? It's, it's a, it's like dealing with a magician and you know it's fake, but you can't, you're not quite sure how he came up with it because he isn't going to show you how he came up with it. And that's not what they're supposed to be doing. They assured us at that meeting that, that, uh, you know, it wasn't just one guy calculating this. They had several engineers calculating these. And once they calculated each segment, they would exchange papers and peer review them in that way. And, you know, as he finished that explanation, I went, "Isn't he going to mention that after they each give each other 100% on their test, they were going to go out for a pitcher of margaritas and some nachos and congratulate themselves?" It's a ridiculous system and it's not, if it isn't transparent to the people who actually study this stuff and do it for a living, how is, how are the people who this is going to affect able to, to know whether or not they're getting screwed? And the other thing is that FEMA has been way less than transparent about their methodology. And I was hoping that FEMA would send somebody here today. I was also hoping that there would be maps here today and we would see another version of what we went through on August the 26th, when the people who could answer the questions weren't here and they really apologized. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Paul. Don?
Council members? Interesting echo. Uh, Don Schmitz. I just flew back down from Sacramento. I didn't have, uh, time to talk to Mr. Grisanti or Mr. Haney. I didn't know that they were going to be testifying tonight. We didn't compare notes, but you're going to, you're going to hear some, uh, interesting parallels in regards to our testimony. Public Works has produced, as usual, a professional report. They're talking about, you need to decide whether or not you're going to pipeline projects and what standards you're going to apply and what the insurance rates are going to be. It's like talking about choosing the, the, uh, the location of the, the patio furniture on the deck of the Titanic. It's not what this is about. The coastal engineers, we have coastal engineers that have been working in this town for decades and decades, are telling me very alarming information. They're telling me that the flood levels are being mapped 10 feet in the colony. They're telling me that houses in the colony, anything in the future or a major remodel will have to be 10 feet above the street. 15.20.150 specifies, that's our municipal code, that any new project or any significant remodel has to be built above those identified flood levels. I don't know because I wasn't involved, but the coastal engineers have told me that the County of Ventura was very much on the ball in regards to this, that they hired Moffett and Nichols and they worked hard for two years with FEMA on the maps. This isn't about insurance rates. I don't know what happened here. I have nothing but the ultimate respect and faith in, in Mr. Brager and, and, and Rob. But this seems to have snuck up on us somewhat. And I urge you to get the straight skinny in regards to what can be done and that needs to be predicated upon what's actually happening to us. These maps are inconsistent and although I did not attend the meeting that was held, the public meeting with FEMA, I was told that there just was not significant answers forthcoming. Now, this city has a lot of resources. We have an excellent Department of Public Work staff. We have a very, uh, well-connected and very imaginative city attorney's office. We have, uh, we still have a lobbying firm up in Sacramento that we have on retainer that's working with us on a monthly basis. We are a coastal city. We're the chili of the coastline. We're a long beach-fronting city and dramatic things are being done. We're a long beach-fronting city, and dramatic things are being done, maps are being drawn here. And one thing I am confident of is that you as the decision-makers and those of us within the community that deal with these things on a regular basis are not fully up to speed in regards to what's actually being proposed and what is transpiring.
Thank you, Don. I did want to correct one thing that was referenced by Paul in regards to the maps. All of the council members did receive the maps in advance and were, I know that I was able to, to review them. I think Laura indicated-
Was part of the agenda package that was not available to the public then?
No, that, this was part of when FEMA initially had the meeting. We received a copy of those, this is, I'm gonna say like a couple, a few months, a couple of months ago, it seems like. So I go, yeah, during the summer. And I understand the, at the same time, though, I do understand how frustrating it would be that they're not in there and that that's what's referenced in what we're supposed to be deciding this evening. I think that there's been a lot of objection to some of those maps from people, you know, in our community. I guess, Don also referenced the objection appears that Ventura had to some of the maps, and they were able to engage a, a large engineering firm to, to deal with that. So I don't, you know, if you, I don't know what questions you guys have for-
I got a comment.
I got a comment.
I was just gonna ask Lou a question about, Lou is our representative on the coastal cities, on the League of California Cities, and I know I also went to the meeting at, at the conference, but is this something that's on your agenda to discuss?
No, these, so far, these are just individual sections of California, the coastline. It's not part of the coastal cities issues group at the moment. It may become one, but it isn't at the moment.
Rick? I did not attend the FEMA meeting, but I heard all about it from everybody, and I don't think I heard any positive comments. And I kind of agree with Don, you know, when I saw that the FEMA thing was on this, I thought it was gonna be, okay, well, how are we gonna, you know, how are we gonna go about appealing this nonsense report that came out? And it's like, there's nothing on here about submitting something from the city during the appeal period. Are we submitting anything in terms of appealing their depiction of what they think the floodplain maps should be? Are we just kind of accepting it and now we're trying to decide on whether we're gonna hold projects to X standard or B standard?
Well, this is the appeal period, and, and it's kind of surprising me to know that any of the, you know, we're talking about the coastal engineers that are basically commenting on this. They're not here to, to appeal, but that we're in the appeal period and anybody can turn in a, an appeal, but it has to be based on scientific data. And it seems to me that the coastal engineers that have that scientistic, scientific data should be, should turn it in. Now, even if after, afterwards, the plans or the floodplain maps are approved, you still can file a, a letter of a map amendment. So there's always the opportunity to do that now and even after their, their, the maps are adopted. Now, Rob would like to talk about what Ventura County did.
So I-
Can I just chime in real quick there, Rob?
Sure.
Bob, could you explain the pick points at the mile markers that were used as indicators for the floodplain map differences that Norm had mentioned, because that was a big decision-maker in my mind, that these were arbitrary based upon markers that didn't make sense? Could you just go into a little detail of that before you get into the Ventura issue?
As in the, the transects and the elevations? I'm, I'm trying to-
Yes.
So-
Because you had one property that was next door, and five feet, it was a different assessment because those markers were, they didn't have, they didn't work along any lines of common sense that I could see, and I tried to be fair about it.
Yes, there, I mean, there is certain, there's a couple instances where the floodplain base foot elevations differ greatly from one side or the other. I think probably up to maybe seven to 10 feet in one, in one case. And we did mention that to them, to our FEMA reps, and they, they did say, based on our analysis and model, this is what they came up with. And so, that's kind of what they said. So, but let me get back to a, a little bit about Ventura County. I did talk to a colleague of mine that works for the city of Ventura. They were involved with hiring Moffett and Nichols to actually evaluate FEMA's process and data and how they come up with the revised floodplain maps. After, after all the review and all the analysis they did, the consultant that, that did that work for the, the county of Ventura found out that the elevations that they came up with came pretty close to, or even maybe a little bit higher than what FEMA was stating, like in their, in their revised maps. So, with that knowledge, County of Ventura, City of Ventura, and all of the coastal cities in that area have decided not to file an appeal based on their analysis. I mean, I also think in, in respect to Ventura, aside from the south end of the county and part of the north end of the county, the bulk of the developed area is a relatively much more simple floodplain district because it's so flat. So I think that it's, I would expect something like that to happen. I think where Malibu, our landscape presented a lot more change because we're essentially a large mountain range that meets the coast, and aside from the Cross Creek area and maybe where the colony is, you know, there's, there's variations in that elevation for the, the ground floor of a home structure everywhere along the coast. So I, I understand where a lot of our residents, I know that I've received many objections from people that are, that are property owners and how they, they understand and evaluate these maps. And I, I sort of gather what you guys are asking is that is, you know, as you evaluate projects now that are coming before you, how are you gonna, you know, knowing a project isn't going to be potentially coming before a planning commission for, or a municipal project for a year from now or something, and that's when those maps are going to be instituted, how should that project be evaluated? I think that it would be, you know, very wise for the city to, to, to put a property owner in a situation where they can have the ability of acquiring FEMA insurance, and I understand that that can help with any loan potentially on a property and other things. And I don't want to discourage the city from doing that, but I think it's also very prudent of us to make sure that that evaluation is accurate when it comes to looking at the flood map than what we're adopting. And my question for Christie would be, does it make sense at this time for us to, to move forward with getting a consultant to review any bit of that, that FEMA, and I know that that's not the item that's necessarily in front of us tonight, but, and hearing some of the objection related to it, I think that those things are very much related, I guess is sort of what I'm saying. And I know that maybe we had asked someone from FEMA to come and give the council a further study of that before, obviously, the maps are adopted, but I don't know if that's something that wouldn't happen for six months or nine months from now after the appeal process. Yeah, we can, we can get in contact with FEMA. I think they're a little busy with all the flooding hurricanes down, down south, but, but we can get in contact with them and see what they can do.
I'd also like to ask for a little more definition on the collected fees for the last 20 years for the city of Malibu and the paid-out fees, because a number of residents asked for that information at the meeting, and they said that they didn't have it and that they couldn't provide it. So let's make sure that they don't look at Malibu as a cash cow, because that was where they were headed. It seemed very easy to come up with those figures, and yet they did not have them. They also didn't present any of the EPA's maps, which I was familiar with from the Santa Monica Day Restoration Commission, and the EPA maps have significant differences. So we have two federal agencies here reporting two different things, so-
Jefferson, that's the beauty of government.
Yes. And I think that for people in Malibu and for the rest of us, that this clarity needs to be presented before we make a decision. Not, not to deny one agency or another, because we're a small municipality in the cog of many things, but we have 21 or 27 miles of coastline that we're responsible for as administrators to be fiduciarily correct for our, you know, our, our people, and then for not, them not to use EPA maps as any kind of guidance was just unbelievable to me. They didn't even recognize them.
Thank you, Jefferson. Laura?
I, I think we're mixing up what, what we're doing. This, this item, I understand, is just for the insurance rates. And so it's not to, you know, be looking for all this other information. My understanding is that it's just, which one do we want to do for people that are kind of in, in the pipeline? I, I think we were-
Laura, it's, it's very important to be very clear, because if someone's in the pipeline and they're going to embark on going on a project that's going to cost hundreds of thousands of dollars, and they need to be directed to now build a structure that's 10 feet above the road level, you're talking about a, a project that would be gravely affected and have a grave impact on the neighbors and without having, you know, I think, it puts a, a property owner in a very awkward position either way right now.
I, I-
Now, not only that-
I wasn't finished.
It also puts the tax assessor in a terrific bind, as well as when the coastal commission opines on how high of an elevation the property can have in the future. So this is, this is really important, that we get these details settled as soon as possible. It's just my opinion.
So, what I was trying to say was that I felt like that was what we were doing, but that it was very clear to all of us last meeting or a couple of meetings ago, when the local engineers and Norm and, I think Paul was there, and a number of people came and spoke to us about what a nightmare that meeting was, and about that the information that, that was provided was confusing and incorrect and on and on. So, what I hear you saying, Bob, is that we really don't have the expertise to appeal, but that the engineers, and we had at least two or three of them here at that, at that meeting just during public comment, that they would have the information, the expertise to appeal. So is, do we want to work with them? Do we want to encourage them to appeal and, and lend whatever expertise the city can? But that's, in my mind, one part, and then the other part is, what do we do with these homes that need insurance and we need to help them out? That's, that's what I was trying to say, that there were two different things there, and I think we all were affected when they, the speakers came a couple of meetings ago. But that's also, it's, it's related, but it, it's also different than what we're being asked to do tonight. At least, that's the way I'm reading.
Well, well, the, again, these coastal engineers, they, they can, they can appeal. I'm sure they're gonna, they'll want to charge us. I think the cost to do the, to hire Moffett and Nichols by the county was, I think, was over $100,000. I'm sure they're not going to, you know, do it for nothing, but they, they still have the ability to appeal. If they have any issues, they can appeal during this appeal period up to when the maps are adopted, and then even after the maps are adopted, they, they can appeal via a letter of a map amendment. So they, they have the ability to do that, but it has to be scientific data. If you want us, if you're directing staff to, to find a consultant, an expert to, to do that, like Moffett and Nichols, we can do that, but it's, it's going to be very expensive. I don't know if it's going to really-
I guess what I was asking is, would these coastal engineers have the, the information? Or is it a study that needs to be done as opposed to a study or an appeal that shows that the maps are incorrect, just, you know, cutting a house in half, making one neighbor this way and another neighbor, you know, have to raise their house? That's what I'm trying to understand. Riva?
I think it might be best at this point if we bring back an item that gives you the ability to decide if we need to move forward with a consultant. I know staff is really looking for direction in what was in the staff report so that we're consistent throughout all the departments and, and providing direction appropriately to applicants, but it sounds to me that we didn't give you enough to work with, and there may be some further information we could provide, maps for the community to see, maybe some information on costs of consultants and what that would provide us. So that would be my suggestion.
I mean, I'd like to see FEMA as well as the, the people that came to our last meeting, or whenever it was that they came, if we can get some of those people here, that would be really-
I don't know the timeframe that we could get FEMA representatives to attend. We have had trouble getting them to respond to us. But, you know, I, I just, listening to the conversations and the concerns, you know, I want to make sure that we're providing everyone with the right information, and maybe we could do a better job of that at another meeting. I don't know if the city attorney has any information she wants to weigh in on.
Time is of the essence, I think. The appeal period clock is ticking. You know, this meeting was in August, it's now the end of September, the window closes on November 6th, and then we're going to come back with, you know, I mean, we're, I think we're behind the bar curve here. So if we're going to do that, I think it has to be really quick, like next meeting, and we need to get on the ball here, because it sounds, I'm not an engineer, but just from what you guys are telling me, you know, it's like, on this thing, there's a six-foot difference from, you know, if you step one foot this way, that sounds a little goofy, you know, and, and there's a recurring theme tonight, you know, dealing with federal government agencies, and I believe I'm the only guy who's been a federal government employee for 30 years, and I can say that I probably need to speak up early and often unless you want to live under the thumb of what they decide for a long time. And we've heard some compelling appeals from, it's not often I agree with Norm Haney and Don Schmitz and Paul Grisanti in one evening, but I think that we have to do our due diligence and at least get some expert to review this and see if it's worthy of a more formalized study, because it sounds like, it sounds like what you guys are saying, it's like, hey, it'd be expensive to, you know, to look at this, but I think that's kind of our responsibility as a city, and when the federal government is doing something that could affect everyone's pocketbook in town, to kind of do the right thing. So I would agree with you, Riva, but if we could have it as quickly as possible, that'd be wonderful.
Rob, could you explain the amendment process and how it goes parcel by parcel? If you could maybe briefly explain that to the council, what you explained to staff last week? The map amendment process?
So, to, to adopt the new maps, or you want the? So, to, to change it, to change a property that's currently, that's, that's, that's already on the flood map and you want it out, there is a process to actually revise the maps. There's a documentation and there's data you need to supply FEMA, and they evaluate that. They, they look at the situation and they make a determination if your property is out of the, of the flood zone, and they will provide documentation back to the city stating that those maps have been revised.
Do we know if anybody is appealing this at all?
They are appealing now?
There are property owners that are definitely appealing this.
Malibu property.
City attorney.
Okay. So at least that appeal is happening somewhere.
Right, of course. So, may I just jump in? So there, there's two things that you're, that are kind of in front of you. The first, you've kind of talked thoroughly about, which is just the phenomenon of FEMA changing its maps, generally speaking, and maybe the process that it came to the maps and some errors through it, and that's, that would go to whether or not you want to get a consultant to come in and sort of look at the maps for the whole city and see if there are some trend problems or individual problems that, that could be addressed. But what you really are, are regulators, and I think what the staff has come to you as regulators of individual property, because what's happening is this, people who are coming to the city whose architects have designed projects that have gone through planning under the current maps are now taking those approvals to the building department, and the building department is saying, hey, wait, we've got some information that you're now going to be building in a place where you're going to end up flooded. How do I know that? Well, here's the FEMA map. And then they'll say, well, I don't agree with that, I'm going to appeal the, that decision to FEMA, I'm working on that now. And the staff says, well, this is the best information we have at the moment, we want to be as safe as possible, so we're going to rely on the new information, even though it's not yet adopted. though it's not yet adopted. Property owner says, well, that's not fair because I have a right to appeal it, but you've kind of taken that appeal right away by using that information against me now. And the staff is saying, well, we're just trying to use the most conservative information we have. And that, I think, is what has kind of come to you in the forms of these options. In the long run, I think I, if I were queen of Malibu, which I'm not, no matter what the Malibu Times says, I think I would agree with what the mayor said, which is that all of this needs to start with having a very well-informed applicant and maybe some delay, you know? And there was a time when we were rebuilding Big Rock after the fire and people were building on areas that didn't have the geologic stability factor that we would allow new homes for. And we came up with the slide waiver as a way of just acknowledging the information that we were moving forward and that the property owner was, you know, making a choice to take a risk, understanding that, you know, these FEMA map, flood plain maps are going to change, that the change was, information was available and that it looks like they were being, proposing projects that wouldn't qualify for insurance. They'd have to take it up with their bank or their insurer or whatever. I mean, there, you know, there may be a way to deal with it with information or alternatively just delay because we're going to know in November, once they adopt the maps, our code says you have to comply with it, the adopted maps. I may, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's how I understood it. So their quandary, their quandary is how do you want us to confront the frustrated property owners who are in the pipeline, who are now proposing to build something that the federal government is saying is likely going to flood, if, you know, under the conditions that they...
I mean, to me, I see that the, you know, where our job is to provide the information to people. And if that's the best information that we have to go on right now, we kind of have to use that. And it's very frustrating because that map likely wouldn't even get certified potentially and fed to the city as, and after it goes through its appeal process till potentially a year from now. But we have to provide the information to property owners and maybe there is a waiver that we can get done or something where they say, okay, I looked at this, but I'm going to decide this other thing. I don't know what the, you know, what the best mechanism for that is, but our staff clearly has to tell a property owner when they come in, hey, you know, you're building in an area where the flood map's going to change and you ought to know, here's the information that we have. So if you choose to build on something that wouldn't meet that condition, then you run the risk of not being able to get flood insurance or not being able to get a loan for, I mean, I don't...
And if FEMA's right, I think...
Yeah, and you run the risk of building somewhere where there's a flood and if you want us to, wherever you can. But that's the best information that we have to go on. Otherwise, I'm being negligent and not providing it to a property owner. Is that correct?
Never use the word negligent.
Not negligent, but...
Yeah, no, I think, I mean, that's, property owners should have all the information the city has and best information that we have, for sure.
So potentially you have, say, okay, we're going to have you follow the new FEMA maps and in the meantime, we'll be appealing it and, you know, getting, hiring an expert to review it and all that. But in the meantime, your remodeling the colony is going to have to be on stilts, you know, 10 feet above everybody else's. And then at the time they're done with their project, it's like, hey, guess what? We went on our appeal and now you're the only house on your street on stilts. Sorry. I mean, that seems kind of silly. So it's, I mean, I think we have an obligation to, before people start spending a whole heck of a lot of money, to kind of figure out if we got the best information. And, you know, I'd be, Don and Norm, if you want to support a building moratorium until you get our appeal done, just kidding, just kidding. But I, I mean, it's complicated. It's complicated. And if the stuff is that far off, it seems like we should be able to figure out by getting someone who's expert in the field to kind of do a quick cursory look at and say, of course.
Well, the EPA already did that. And remember, the report indicated that the county of Ventura, the city of Ventura and some of the other low-lying areas found that what FEMA had presented was not far off from what their Moffitt and Nichols report and assessments that made as well. So we are in a different area than the low-lying areas of Camarillo, Oxnard, Port Juaniemi and Ventura. Those assessments may be fair, but the EPA did a lot of this on our coast and we're not even looking at those maps.
Ultimately, I think we just have to make sure that our homeowners are not collateral damage in an argument between the EPA and FEMA. And I think your solution was a good idea, Christie, if we can do something, a waiver-ish kind of a thing that makes sense. I mean, I know with the Big Rock waiver, which is also called the terrorist waiver, people actually hold their chairs when they sign it. It's quite a waiver. But everybody that's there knows what they're buying into and they know what they're getting and they understand their story. And I think that's our responsibility is to explain it to people. I think making people build their houses, you know, 10 feet above the street because we think this is going to work, I don't know if that's, makes a lot of sense.
So what you're saying is you provide the information to them and let the homeowner decide what they want to do?
Until these things become law, because they're not law now.
So then what you would be doing is you'd be evaluating the project based on the FEMA flood map, which is what option one is?
Yeah, giving them the opportunity to, as long as we tell them that that's what, that's an issue that they may have to face, that they not, may not be in...
Okay, so if you were to evaluate a project right now, so you have the new map, which is not certified, but it may be coming down the pipeline and then you have the old map. Are you saying that you would use the old map or you would use the new map?
I would let the homeowner know the difference, that the risk that they're taking by using the old map is this.
But you can't do that. We got to tell them what to do. We got to tell the staff what to do. Evaluate the project based on the old map or evaluate the project based on the new map?
It's only for around six weeks if November, well, I guess the new ones aren't going to come out till next year. The appeal process is just, okay.
If you're talking about appeals, you're just talking about individual appeals that people are making along the coast that not everybody's making. It's not the city making an appeal.
Look, you're likely going to appeal that if you have a project that you're working on. If you feel that the, I mean, is that correct? And how laborious is that project, that appeal for someone? Is this something where we're putting a homeowner in a situation where they're going to have to go and burn $100,000 and wait six months? That's what I fear. Or more than that.
I don't know the answer to that question. But I do know that, you know, FEMA, until proven otherwise, FEMA believes that these maps reflect the flood plains. And whatever their black box method was, that we don't, you know, know, that reflects their proposed regulation. So overcoming it is going to have to be, as Mr. Haney pointed out, a scientific, or I don't remember who said it exactly, but a scientific counterpoint.
But at this point, we don't have that scientific counterpoint. So that's what I don't understand why...
It's amazing sharing it.
So even if I request that FEMA share the science related to it, which we will do, and I would recommend that that's something we should do now as a council, and if we need to direct a letter to them to request, you know, explain to an engineer at our staff how you come up with this so that that information can be decimated from the public. I mean, that should be public information. That should be, shouldn't have to do a request for information to get how these guys come up with a number. Should be, any engineer would be able to devise, but clearly there's a big discrepancy here.
The clarity is what you desire. To give you another instance, Army Corps of Engineers assessment for the Tranquus Bridge, the FEMA map, the new one adopted, if it's adopted, would put the new bridge that they're about to build and embark on underwater.
They call that a submersible.
The new, the new maps are in development, is how I understand it. That was an outreach thing and that was the draft map and they have an appeal period and so on and so forth. And the new maps aren't going to be in effect until sometime in 2018, correct?
You got to know that the map, knowing that the map is coming down the pipe as projects are going to be designed, you have to know that that project is going to be evaluated to some standard. And the standard when that project comes online is going to be whatever the new map is.
But if your project is completed before the map is online...
But see, well, that's, I mean, the whole thing, remember, we rely on evidence to make findings, right? And so this becomes, you know, valid evidence that you can't just ignore it. I mean, there's, you know, I understand the complaint about the mystery of how the conclusions were reached, but the presumption is, is that this was a scientific endeavor and that the conclusions are based on that. And, you know, and so we have to over, I mean, you, also, you don't want to, you know, encourage people to build in a way that'd be unsafe.
So if, if we weren't with...
It seems fair enough, Christie. Your assessment is fair to ask, they're presenting their scientific reasoning for the new map's adoption, but the reasoning and the science is not there for us to review. Part of that is peer review. If we can't review it, how can we make a fair assessment? They were, they're asking us to present engineering on our own that refutes their mapping, yet they haven't shown us the science to get to the position of the mapping that they're proposing. It's kind of a quandary because the Army Corps of Engineers is going to embark on that project I just mentioned and it would be underwater according to their science. So whose science do we believe?
I would suggest, since we're coming back anyways, to let staff figure out how we can more aggressively engage with FEMA about the standard that they use and maybe come up with a better understanding about what the risks are to the property owner for using the current instead of the new information.
All right, I'll make a motion to do that.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
So can I ask one more?
Yes, you can ask a question.
So are we asking, so are we telling staff you, there's...
We're just going to have to come back because we don't really fully understand what the implications of choosing one over the other. But we're using the Big Rock model to see, you know, just how far we can go to with just informing the property owner, allowing the property owner to make his or her own decision. But we just, we can't, you can't decide that because we're not sure if, what the implications are, but that's what we want to look at.
Well, I just want to know from staff if that's going to be an issue or it's just we can put that, this off for a few weeks.
Are we also going to include what city manager recommended about coming back with some estimates of an expert looking at it and reviewing it?
Yeah, we can get estimates on what it would be to review the FEMA maps and come up with recommendations, trying to get FEMA here for the next meeting. We can do our best. I can't, I can't guarantee anything.
I'm not that concerned about having a FEMA guy here. They got their hands full. But maybe if we could make, send a letter to request the information, the background information where they came up with their conclusions, but more importantly, have an expert do at least a cursory review of what they've done.
Yeah, absolutely. We can request that information and what, how they come up with it.
I can get David Weiss and...
Norm, come to the mic. And thank you for speaking, Norm. Completely out of turn. Go ahead.
Okay, well, I apologize for that, but I thought it was important. I can get the ocean engineers that have done most of the work here in the city of Malibu to respond and also I'll try and get them to make a proposal to the city. I believe the city needs to appeal. One thing I just want to mention, one person appeals his project, he wins the appeal, his neighbors are up here, he's down here. How do you get a car into this garage? How do you decide how high a house is if you've changed what is safe and what is not safe? Those are my comments.
Well, if we just have 24 feet and now you got to build 12 feet off ground, then you only have 12 feet to go and now you're a single-story house unless you're really short.
Well, no, that's one, that's one way to do it. Anyway, I will do my best.
A nice viewing deck.
I will do my best to get the ocean engineers that have done most of the work in the city of Malibu to have a proposal for you and to show up at the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Norm. We really appreciate that. I don't mean to be making a joke of this. It's a very serious thing and I appreciate the comments here tonight. So without that further ado, a first, a second, a couple amendments that have been accepted in relation to getting cost for an engineer to review the FEMA study. Roll call.
Mayor Peake?
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamont?
Yes.
Councilmember Rosenthal?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Mullen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Kelsey. We're now at item 7A, which is Broad Beach sand replacement. And I would imagine that we have a couple of speakers on that. So just to start this off, I wanted to send a letter to the Coastal Commission that supports a marine-based delivery of sand to the Broad Beach. And there'll be a couple of people here tonight that'll speak on that. And did everyone get a chance to review the sand and visit Broad Beach and look at the sand up there that was, was different?
Yes.
Yes, okay. I just wanted to make sure.
I did, I did at the same time you did.
You did. And then Jefferson, just for the record, I don't know if you're going to see this, but we, you have a, there's a, a few sheets of paper from Don Schmitz about bringing back the sand. I don't know if you have it. You should have that possibly in an email that you could look at.
Yes, I did review it.
Okay, cool. All right, so we're going to have a couple of public comments. Mikey Pearson followed by Don Schmitz followed by Ken Erlich.
And mine?
What's up? Sir?
You don't have the quickest slip for me?
Oh, I do, it's just in a different order. Sorry. Yeah, I just did it in threes. I have, so Mikey Pearson followed by Don Schmitz followed by Ken Erlich, then Sarah Wan, then Nick Van Dyke, and then Paul Grisanti.
Hello.
Hi, Mike. How are you?
Esteemed counsel, how we doing? I'm hoping you all got the letter from the Malibu West HOA and reviewed it. And just in summary quickly, the board unanimously supports that if sand is coming in this project, that we would greatly appreciate a letter of support that it comes by barge, not by thousands of truckloads coming up the highway. So I'm here to deliver that for the board, which I'm still on for about another week and a half. And personally, I want to add that I'm still not really convinced that the ocean cares about sand on the beach. It's, was there before, it's gone now. I think the ocean does what the ocean does. But yeah, every single person I know in Malibu West that I've discussed this issue with also agrees that the barge is the only thing that makes sense. The thought of endless trucks, I don't even think 22,000 is really the correct number anymore of dump truckloads coming at the highway absolutely makes no sense to, I don't think, Malibu or community, the environment, any, anyway. And so I just want to express support on behalf of the HOA and their letter and myself to please go ahead and send that letter. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mikey. Don? Don followed by Ken.
Councilmembers, Don Schmitz, you have these slides in front of you. This is really one of the biggest no-brainers of all time and the impacts are pretty startling. 22,000 truckloads, that's 22, over 22 trucks per hour. That's a truck every 1.3 minutes, five days a week from 7:00 AM until 9:00 PM, September through May 28th. Plus, we've got the two minor nourishments of 75,000 cubic yards in between the major nourishments, which are 5,500 truckloads. That's 75,000 truckloads over the life of a 10-year project. Barging it is the only thing that makes sense. And I do appreciate very much Mayor Peake, who is hanging on every word of my presentation here tonight, asking that this letter get written and that you are exercising that political leadership truly. But I'm going to ask you to make sure that it's strong, it has teeth in it. I want to point something out, that this is a determination in regards to the grain sand and the GAD's been working very hard to try and get this resolved, that's being made at the staff level. This council basically gave all authority to the Coastal Commission to process coastal development permit for the beach nourishment project. Clearly, there are significant impacts to our community here. We all want to have a broad beach. That's why you formed the GAD and it's a very laudable goal. But clearly, there are alternatives in regards to ways to get this, this amount of sand on the beach. If the staff will not show a more enlightened approach in regards to working with the GAD representatives in regards to this, there is recourse for the city. And oh, I'm not talking about immediately filing lawsuits and such, but the GAD and others can file... But, but the GAD and others can file to the Coastal Commission what's called an appeal of the executive director's determination. It's not done very often, but sometimes it's appropriate. I've done it in the 30-year career of representing people in front of the commission. Again, not very often, but the stakes here are incredibly high. And so my plea to you is that should the Coastal Commission staff not work with the GAD to allow the, the sand to be brought in via barge, that you let the commission know that you will seriously consider making moves in the direction of appealing the executive director's determination to the commission. Because candidly, council members, I think that, I think that the commission would, would look favorably upon the option of barging in the sand. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Ken, followed by Sarah Wan, followed by Nick Van Dyke.
Thank you, Mr., Mr. Mayor. It's late, I'm sorry. And I just, after hearing that, I'm thrown. In any event, I'm here on behalf of serving as counsel for the GAD itself. As you just went through the debate on FEMA flood maps, this is complicated. The GAD's been dealing with this for six years. In the six years we've been dealing with it, the price for ocean-delivered sand has gone from more expensive to less expensive. Meanwhile, in the same period of time, there is no proven method of delivering ocean-delivered sand in this wave environment to this beach. The one time that the proposed marine contractor in this instance did it, it was in a protective aspect of the East Bay of San Francisco at a place called Crown Beach. And there were problems between the marine contractor and the general contractor for that project. Now, I'm not here, I, I'm here on behalf of the GAD, and we support frankly the Canadian barged-in sand. The GAD supported it a year ago and, and even longer when it was a darker color. To their credit, Polaris has gone back and reformulated it, made it lighter. We're told make it conform to the Coastal Commission specification, and yet there are still issues. And yet the GAD still wants to use that sand. So on behalf of the GAD, it, the GAD's not asking the council to do anything. I want to make that very clear. So we appreciate the council's input, but the GAD is working through this issue as best as it can. So we have a meeting with the Coastal Commission in October, which will hopefully deal with these issues of the Canadian-delivered sand and work them through. We are also working with the quarry-delivered sand to perfect the truck route, which is not as Mr. Schmitz represented in a variety of accounts that are irrelevant for this discussion. But in any event, we want to bring the best project, the, the best sand with the least amount of impacts for this community. That's the GAD's intent, and the GAD board is working very, very hard to do that. So I would suggest, let us go back. We're working very well with Polaris. We're working through the issues we have. Let us figure this out. This is not going to happen this year for a variety of reasons. And if, if you want more updates from the GAD, we're happy to give them. There's no issue of transparency here. It's just, there's more, there's more to this than meets the eye. And we want to bring the best project possible to this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Sarah, followed by Nick.
How much time do I have? You had given me seven minutes.
How much time do you need?
I need about six or seven minutes.
Go for it.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Peak and council members, thank you for allowing me to speak today on, yes, I have a, what's the, is this what advances the slide? Okay. Red button? The right one. Okay, okay. Polaris Materials' proposal to bring from Canada 300,000 cubic yards of sand required to complete the Broad Beach revetment project. Our proposal to deliver sand from a self-unloading ship pumped to shore as a slurry, a mixture of sand and water, was first made in 2014. The sand from Orca meets all project specifications for size, shape, and cleanliness. The CSL ships are state-of-the-art. The method of pumping sand slurry for beach replenishment has been successfully carried out multiple times in, by Lind Marine in Northern California. It is the best environmental alternative, and compared to trucking the sand about 40 miles one way using 14 cubic yard dump trucks, 21,500 of them, clogging the road and especially impacting PCH as they drive into and out of Malibu, it is, we believe, the alternative that this council should support. The opposition to our proposal, we feel, is unwarranted. That opposition is based on two issues. That the color is too dark to be visually acceptable and that the color will affect the temperature and heat transfer and therefore the restoration in beach, in beach wildlife. All of you, as you said, have seen the color while it is, and while it is darker, it is certainly acceptable. And when you look at it, as you did, in the context of the beach, the beach itself has a tremendous amount of variability, and the difference between our sand and the beach sand's color will probably not be noticeable. As for the, the issue of temperature and heat, I've provided all of you in advance with a write-up showing that according to the laws of thermodynamics, color does not have any impact on the temperature of the sand or on heat conduction, which for sand is a complex phenomenon dependent on many variables, including the composition of the material, the grain size, the mass of each grain and saturation, among other parameters. Our sand is most likely of similar composition and properties to the existing Broad Beach sand, since it comes from long-buried riverbed. To support our position on the temperature, we conducted a simple experiment to compare the temperature of the two materials. We constructed, ah, I've gone past one. There we go. We constructed two boxes, and you all saw those two eight-foot by eight-foot boxes, and placed them on Broad Beach. We filled one with, with sand from Broad Beach and the other with our sand. We took two digital recording thermometers and placed one probe seven centimeters down in one box and the other probe seven centimeters down in the other box, and we left them in place for a full day. The temperatures recorded every 15 minutes were essentially the same, much less than the calibrated margin of errors the instrument used. And you can see, those are the two lines of the two data. They're so close, you can't even separate them. Thus, there is no basis for concern as it relates to the temperature and heat transfer characteristics of sand due to color. And that was the issue that was the, the hangup. What should be of concern to this council are the impacts of bringing the sand by truck. And we are talking about 21,500 trucks traveling about 80 miles round trip from a proposed source in Moor Park, taking about two hours versus one ship every 11 days. The impact on the local environment from this truck traffic should be unacceptable to this council as it is unacceptable to the cities of Moor Park and Fillmore, and now I understand to many of your residents as well. The proposal in the traffic analysis, which was dated February 2014, and that's the only traffic analysis we have, it calls for this to take, this process by truck, three and a half months, and assumes a two-minute interval between trucks. These, that, that short interval is really unrealistic. It will require at least 60 trucks to carry out, and filling of 14 cubic yard truck tanks takes five to 15 minutes, depending on the logistics. When I put in the route which enters PCH at Las Posas Road, MapQuest had a comment that the route chosen, quote, "has multiple stops along your route," end quote. No kidding. How does one keep the spacing when there are stop signs, unsynchronized traffic lights, other trucks, cars, even possible police activity or emergency vehicles coming and going? By the time the trucks arrive at Zuma, they are certain to be a series of solid lines of trucks with no spacing, a problem for those of us who have to use PCH, as you can, as you are aware. When they get to the Zuma Beach parking lot, the county has told me that they will not allow them to enter the lot and stack up there. If they cannot get into the lot and make their turnaround in two minutes, for whatever reason, including any breakdown in the conveyor system required to remove the sand from the beach between the lot and Trancas Creek, they'd have to continue traveling through Malibu to Malibu Canyon Road until they, that's about 15 miles, I think, okay, until they can return northbound and make a left turn into Zuma. The county won't allow this, and has told the contractor they'll be required to be able to contact all trucks. And if there is any slowdown, require them to pull over and stop till the slowdown ends. Really impossible in certain areas for them to do that. It simply can't work in the time that they're talking about. Could it work? I don't know. But it's not going to take three and a half months. And as you see, if it even goes to 10 minutes between the trucks, you're talking about a year to get this done. The marine sand solution will place the sand faster, provide access to the beach during construction, be completed sooner, have less environmental-
Sarah.
Yeah?
I think we get it.
Okay.
Thank you.
What we're, let me just ask, tell you what we're asking. We're asking this council to send a letter to the Coastal Commission, asking that they reconsider their opposition to the marine-supplied sand solution and stating that the color is not of concern to you and that a solution that does not involve the trucking of sand and all of its negative impacts is preferred and considered by you to be the least environmentally damaging alternative. That's what we're asking of you tonight.
Thank you, Sarah.
I think it'd be in the interest of all of the residents of Malibu.
That's why it's on the agenda. Nick, or Nick, do you go by Nick or Nicholas? Either, okay.
Thank you. I appreciate the council for taking the time to hear from me. I'm, I'm not a resident of this community. I've come from Canada, specifically here. We think this is an important project for us and an important project for the community. I'd like to thank Mike, Mike, Don, and Sarah for their support of our project. We think this is the right solution, and your support as a community member, and in Sarah's case, as a former commissioner of the Coastal Commission, means a lot to us. I think Sarah's covered the technical issue as well. I would like to add one comment on the impacts of the trucking. You know, in terms of the cycle time, two minutes or less, that means that during the time of Sarah's speech, you would have already heard seven or eight trucks rumbling by the room or, you know, if there was an open window. Fairly significant noise impact in addition to the other factors that, that have been commented on by others. As Ken noted, our solution is now the most cost-effective solution compared with land-based trucking. Our, our costs for delivery have essentially been unchanged, where the cost for land-based trucking has gone up significantly. I also want to take a few minutes to talk about Polaris as a company and how we approach this kind of thing. We're, we're really a part of, we're partially owned by First Nations. Our quarry is, is very responsibly operated. We believe that we produce our aggregates for significantly less greenhouse gas impact than local quarries do. We run off of the BC Power grid, which is hydro power, so it's mostly renewable power that's used to generate our aggregates. So all of these factors combined, we think that our greenhouse gas impact is somewhere in the order of about half of the impact of a land-based source. To do a robust comparison of that, you have to do a whole bunch of analysis that we haven't done yet. It's quite expensive to do that analysis in detail, and we wouldn't do it until we were approved as a source. So to echo what Sarah, Sarah is saying, is that we're hoping that the council will, you know, express their support for us as a potential source for the project. We recognize there are engineering issues that need to be worked through in the delivery of, of marine, sand via marine delivery in the coastal zone. But we've, we've also just recently hired a project manager who's got a, a great deal of international experience with this sort of project. Among other examples, he's worked with a number of Dutch companies. And as you may know, this is my background. My last name's Van Dyke. In, in the Netherlands, the, 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 the impact of tides and, and water is, is very, very significant. Beach erosion is very, very significant, and they know how to do this kind of thing. And so David, who is our, our recently retained project manager, is, is going to take a very direct hand in, in helping us work with the GAD to, to engineer the project and make sure that we deliver it appropriately. So thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you, Nick. Paul?
Mayor and council, I'm so honored to be here to talk on this one, too. I'm a stakeholder in that, in the Malibu West area, and I'm in favor of you writing the letter. I think anything that could be done to get coastal, I, I'm sure you're aware that over the last three years, Coastal has had a, a moving target for the, for the project. And they constantly, they have nothing but objections, and I love this solution. I hope that you can encourage them to reconsider it. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Ken, I had a question for you. And I just wanted to, not that I thought that you were necessarily opposed to this. I just was going to, kind of curious to, to hear where you guys were at with the Coastal Commission and any discussion related to this.
I'm happy to answer the question. Let me first address one point that's just blatantly wrong, and I want to make sure the record's clear. The proposed truck route comes from Moor Park directly to the, the Zuma Lot 12. Will not, trucks for this project under the truck route will not go south of PCH and Guernsey. So talk about Malibu Canyon is just irrelevant and completely off-point. All that said, we want to use the sand. So, I mean, I want to make it very, very clear that the GAD supports the Polaris alternative of ocean-delivered sand if it can be engineered correctly. So where we stand exactly to answer your question. Right now, we are working with the Polaris to make sure the sand formulation will be accepted by the commission staff. The GAD supports that effort. The GAD supported the sand even when it was darker. The board has been on record. So we are going to go there hand in hand with Polaris. Hopefully, we're not going to be talking about trucks on Malibu Canyon. We're going to be talking about properly formulated sand that meets Section 8 of the GAD CDP. That meeting is set for October 25th.
And that's a meeting between the GAD and the Coastal Commission, not at a coastal hearing?
Correct.
Okay.
It's the GAD staff. We've already spoken. The GAD frankly has already been in discussions with the executive director about this meeting and about how important it is for the GAD to get this sand source approved. That said, the concern about engineering remains, and we need to work it through with Polaris. We are not at all knocking any of their team. Their team, we believe, are good at what they do.
You're working on a solution you're going to get there.
We're working to make sure that this can be done in this ocean environment, not necessarily the sheltered East Bay of San Francisco Bay.
Well, hell-
So that, that's exactly what we're working on.
If it was done in the last month and a half, considering the fact that the surfers have been in the doldrums, you would have been fine.
And I, believe me, no one in this world wishes that it wouldn't have been done more in this last month and a half than me. So we're doing our best to get this right. And using, the, the ship is exactly correct. There's no issue about the ship delivering from British Columbia. The issue is the transfer of the material, then the slurring of it on the barge, and then the pumping of it between a half and three-quarters of a mile from the barge onto shore. That's the challenging, that's the exciting part.
But that's what the engineers are for. They'll figure it out.
And we'd love to get, get it done and get the best engineers possible for that.
Kristy?
Oh, thank you. I didn't have a question.
Damn.
I just wanted to, just to address your role for a second and encourage you to stay at the 10,000-foot level. And we formed the Geological Hazard Abatement District not because we wanted a particular project, but because we, they wanted to use a financing mechanism that was available that also insulated the city from liability for the project. So this really is the, the GAD's project to go forward with. But what I think Ms. Wan is asking for is a legitimate thing that, that the city can offer, which is not an opinion about the project, because we don't have all the information about the project, but opinion about how we would value the freedom from the truck trips and the noise and the pollution as against soil color or sand color. And that, given those things, we would give, you know, we'd accept a little discoloration to save us from the noise and the pollution of the truck trips, to just keep it at the, yeah, the, the level that is helpful, I think, to the commission in terms of trying to assign weight to competing values rather than try and get into the visibility of this way, method or another.
I'd just like to make a motion to authorize the mayor to send the letter, as it says here.
Jefferson?
Yes, yes, I agree with Laura's.
Did you want to second that?
I'll second it. And can we add the, the mayor and the full council if we vote to go that way beyond the letter?
Yeah, that the council voted and that the mayor would then send the letter. Yeah, absolutely.
A roll call.
Councilmember Rosenthal?
Yes.
Councilmember Wagner?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamont?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Mullen?
Yes.
Mayor Peak?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Good night. Good night. I'll make a motion to adjourn. Good night.
I'll second it.